Are we ready, AGP? Ready to go? Okay, it looks like we're ready to go. Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 8th. This is our regular city council meeting located here at the Veterans Memorial Hall at 209 Surf Street. Welcome. For the record, all members are present. Absent, Councilmember Matt Makawetzki. We do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. And at this time, if you'll please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Graham, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I consider it honorable that we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Scott. We close session report. We have no reportable actions to report at this time.
Correct.
Thank you. And we'll move on to mayor council member reports and announcements. Christine, do you have any announcements?
Yes, good evening. One brief announcement. We have so many new and exciting places to ride our bicycles in the city of Morro Bay. I wanted to just remind everyone of the street cycling Morro Bay workshop that's coming up. I think we could all use a refresher course in how to bike safely and share the road with others. The event is Saturday, September 26th, and it's from 9:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. And if you'd like more information about it, you can give me a call, 305-3759, or you can go online and register at bikeslowcounty.org. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christine. John? Noah? None? Well, with that, that'll conclude our announcements and presentations and move us on into public presentation. And tonight, we have presentation. The topic is community choice aggregation. The presentation is by California Clean Power, Peter Rumble. Thanks for coming and welcome to Morro Bay.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate being here. I appreciate the invitation and your council's indulgence for having me here. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I'm just delighted to talk about community choice and California Clean Power. We are having a little bit of technical challenges. And so, we're going to tag team, I think, this presentation. So if you bear with me, I'll be repeating X, please, throughout the presentation. So what I wanted to do is provide a general overview, a pretty high-level overview of community choice aggregation, and then move into what community choice can do for Morro Bay and what we, as a company, are offering to help communities just like Morro Bay achieve through community choice. I was going to present a brief video, which is wonderful, aside from you have to see my face and listen to me for two minutes. But that video could be found on, if we go back one slide, the video can be found right there, as well as on our website, under the About Us section of our website. So please do check it out. It has some good information about who we are, what makes us unique, and how we deliver services to communities. We'll cover some of it, but it's a nice two-minute summary of it. So with that, we'll just dive right in, instead of seeing the video, into community choice and some background and some context. So, community choice, in one sentence, community choice is every community's legal right to control where energy comes from and what that energy is. So that is fundamentally what community choice is. It came out of the energy crisis in California and was established by AB 117. And again, that establishes your right to secure your own energy and determine, have local control over what that energy looks like, what kind of composition it is. And it was created when viewing the energy crisis and seeing how municipal utility districts fared, they fared better than the large utilities. So it was really created as a way for local jurisdictions to protect themselves from that type of crisis, to control rates. As we know, rates have gone up and up and up and up, even when markets are down. And so that law gives local jurisdictions the ability to provide some control over that. And it also begins to decentralize sort of power structures, if you forgive the pun, within the overall energy market in California. And again, give that power back to communities. Community choice was established as a default program, which means when a community establishes a CCA, the all residents and businesses are automatically a part of the program. So just initially, everybody is a part of the program and a participant in the program. Everybody has the option of stepping away from the program and opting out of the program. But it's established as the default program, and that helps viability of community choice. So it helps build a kind of a critical mass in the community to participate in the program. There are very strong benefits to community choice and very important benefits to community choice, and they're threefold. One is environmental, one is economic, and the third is local control. And coming from local government, you know, local control really resonates for me as being a strong benefit, rather than giving that control to a corporation, or to the state, or to another entity. Having that control locally, I believe, is as strong of a benefit as environmental and economic. And one last piece of context that I would put, and this is more of an opinion than it is sort of community choice fact, but really, I see a strong urgency around community choice. And that urgency goes back to the environmental and the economic benefits of CCA or community choice, in that we are, politics aside, facing an environmental crisis. And community choice programs are one of the most powerful tools local governments have to affect greenhouse gas emissions. So they can, studies have been done, benefits have been proven out in operational programs, that this program, CCA, community choice, can lower greenhouse gas reduction emissions more than many other programs combined. So it's a very powerful tool in that regard. And so there's a sense of urgency. If we're going to do something about climate change and environmental protection, let's do it now, rather than waiting until maybe the perfect opportunity down the road. There's another urgency around the economics of community choice. And every month, when you pay your bill, there is money leaving your community and going to shareholder profits in the utilities. That's just a fact. And so, in order to capture that revenue, to reinvest it in your community, to reinvest it in renewable projects, or business incentives, or whatever your community's priorities are, there is some urgency there. You are losing money every month. On top of that, because community choice programs can reduce rates for individual ratepayers, customers, there's an economic urgency in that sense, too. People struggling to make ends meet, a few dollars off their bill can mean a world of difference. And so that's just my perspective of some urgency behind community choice. Now, boiled down to that one sentence, it is your community's right to control where your energy comes from and what kind of energy that is. Everything else about the grid, everything else about turning on your lights on a day-to-day stays the same. So, in your case, PG&E still maintains the reliability of the grid, still makes sure that there's safety on the grid. When your power goes out during a storm, PG&E still comes out and fixes the lines. Everything else that you know about the energy delivery system stays the same, outside of that one right that you exercise. Billing stays virtually identical to the customer. There's very little difference at all that you would even notice. And then, another important factor around operations is the utilities are legally forbidden from opposing community choice. And so, not only do you have a legal right as a community to establish a community choice program, you have legal protection in doing so. And so the utilities can't directly oppose your efforts. And this came out of, this protection came out of hard-fought battles from community choice programs that stood up over the course of time, over the last decade or plus. And then finally, again, through success, we see Marin Clean Energy, Sonoma Clean Power, Lancaster Clean Energy, three programs in California that are already standing up and are proving out the benefits of community choice. And we see in other states throughout the nation, while motivations might be slightly different than in California, namely, not all community choice programs are environmentally-focused as they are in California, we still see that they are highly successful and deliver benefits back to the community. Now, with that success, we've seen a proliferation in interest in community choice. And so, you've got to think of from where the energy crisis happened and when AB 117 came on the books. It's been over a decade, and we'll get to why that is, but over a decade since that law was established, since community choice came into existence, and we have three programs. But, the more and more the success of those programs are proven out, the more and more interest there is throughout the state. And that interest is manifesting itself just like it is here tonight, where local communities and elected leaders are seeing the benefits of community choice and informing themselves, beginning the dialogue at the community level. And I would be remiss to not note that many community groups, grassroots groups, have been champions and advocates for community choice. Slow Clean Energy, for example, has been a fantastic champion here locally. We've also seen, through the successive programs, some very sort of basic elements that are being replicated. And some of those are here on this slide, where a base level of renewable service has been established, around 33%. It's a little bit higher in some and no lower than 33%, but essentially, on a concept, there's a base level, and then there's a sort of a premium and sort of an opt-in level of renewable service. And so, in Marin-Sonoma, for example, you've got a base level service and you've got 100% renewable option for people who want to pay a little bit higher rate, but want to have 100% renewable energy. And then, not finally, next, we have lower rates that are being proven out. Now, Marin Clean Energy did launch at a slightly higher rate than PG&E, but over time, we're seeing that settle out and prove out that community choice, due to a number of factors, can consistently deliver a lower rate. And then finally, on this slide, investment in very innovative programs. And so we're seeing investment in local renewable generation programs, like, there's a floating solar project in Sonoma County that's coming online that covers wastewater ponds, right, and helps the operations of a wastewater pond, as well as provides that solar benefit. Yolo County, while they don't have a community choice program yet, is looking at community choice as a way to harvest power essentially from the landfill and then sell that back, make that program financially viable by selling that power back into a community choice program. So there's a lot of very exciting, innovative programs that are possible through community choice. Now, I want to dig into the three primary benefits, the environmental, the economic, and the local control benefits, in a little bit more detail. First of all, straight out of the gate, with a community choice program, you're reaping environmental benefits because the level of renewable energy, if you launch at 33%, is de facto higher than what you're receiving now from the utility. And the higher you push that renewable baseline, the greater environmental benefit you're going to achieve. With the proliferation of CCA, of community choice programs, there's also an increasing demand for renewable projects throughout the state, for renewable energy throughout the state. So simply by the expanding number of community choice programs, even if it were at a baseline level of 33% renewable, you are establishing a greater market demand for renewable energy. And that will drive new renewable projects in the state. Individuals can also have that personal environmental impact by opting into a higher level. So we mentioned the 100% level. And individuals can even, you know, push that environmental benefit even higher. And then, as I mentioned before, relative to innovative programs, you can drive the environmental benefits of your program by taking revenue that comes through the program itself and then invest that in distributed generation programs, rooftop solar programs, energy efficiency programs, demand response. There's a lot, a lot of programs and options there, and it's really up to your imagination and your will to see them happen. Economic benefits. Now, I mentioned before, every month when you're paying your bill, you know, that being sort of the economic urgency behind community choice, kind of goes without saying that instead of that money leaving your community and going to, well, in this case, San Francisco, it would stay, the portion of your bill that relates to energy generation would circle back and come right back to the community. So that money is local, and there's been studies upon studies about a dollar can, you know, ripple out to threefold, that type of impact, if it stays local and it's invested locally. Again, lower rates saves individuals on their own personal finances as well. And the combination of those, if they're invested in local projects, in infrastructure, can absolutely create jobs and more solid foundation, more attractive foundation for economic development in your city. So keeping those dollars local, investing those dollars local, we know it through community choice, as well as we do through shopping at your local markets and stores, has a tremendous benefit. And then finally, local control. The decisions that you make related to energy are all your decisions, are all decisions that you control, that are all decisions that have public view and input. And so, again, I can't overstate that benefit. Right now, you have absolutely no say over where your energy comes from. You pay your bill and you get what you get. Local control means the world to us government types. Now, you have to make some decisions within that. So you need to balance, any jurisdiction needs to balance those three benefits, the renewable mix, the revenue that's coming back to your program, and ratepayer savings. And we can talk about that a little bit more in depth as we go through. But essentially, your jurisdiction, your program, sets rates on an annual basis, subject to market conditions, and those rates generate what comes back in revenue. And these are sort of three levers that you can pull. So if you decrease your rate, you're going to have less revenue coming in. If you increase your renewables, you're probably not going to be able to depress your rates as much, and you're not going to have as much revenue coming in. If you set your rates closer to PG&E, you're going to have more revenue coming in that you could use for other purposes. So those three benefits, you need to hold in sort of dynamic tension and receive community input and shape your program to reflect community priorities. But again, all of that is under your purview, under your control. And I touched upon what to do with revenue coming in, but those decisions as well are yours to make. We can provide support, or I'm sorry, I'll get to us in a little bit. Any program would have input from a provider or from the community about how those dollars should be invested, but again, those are your decisions to make. So, establishing a CCA. I mentioned before that over a decade, this law's been on the books and we have three programs. And that's not due to a lack of trying. There are serious and high hurdles to overcome to establish a community choice program. I've broken them out into very broad categories of economics and expertise, and we know from track record, from history in California, that it takes a significant amount of money to establish a community choice program. And that's money to start up operations, that's money to post bonds and collateral, that's money to collateralize energy purchase, and it's money to bring on financing, you know, the cost of money itself. On the expertise side, you've got to either recruit or bring in expertise on legal, energy market, energy procurement, customer service, interfacing with the utilities, and having a community relations program. And so just building that expertise, particularly around the energy market itself, is very, very difficult for local governments to do. And so those two barriers prevented a lot of jurisdictions from having a community choice program. And we'll get into our genesis in a little bit, but we provide, California Clean Power provides all of those services, all of the financing. We're self-financed, so we don't lend out money. We take on the burden of financing. And we have all the expertise we need in our core team and our staff, as well as partnership relations. And our beautiful core team, I list it out here, so you can see that we're actually real people, it's not just me. And I wanted to also show the next slide. It's okay. Our board, because our board is very active in our day-to-day operations and familiar with community choice and very supportive of this direction. Bill Gallagher, for example, is the chair of our board, is the founder of First Community Bank, which is the bank that funded Sonoma Clean Power. So absolutely appreciates and understands the value of community choice. And then I've listed our other partners there. EDMS being one of them is one of our highly technical and specialized partners. They provide data management services. So the data that comes from your meter to PG&E, to the community choice program and back, to make sure that billing is appropriate, EDMS handles. So our mission, our mission, we formed, we came together to give communities their power back through community choice. And so we want to empower cities and counties throughout California to establish community choice programs of their own, in communities of every size. We want to increase communities' use of renewable energy, save ratepayer monies, and empower local councils and boards to invest and fund local priorities. Oh? Okay. So we'll get back to the, oh, perfect. We are a benefit corporation, and we're also going through certification to be a B Corp. So those are two different things, but they're very important. A benefit corporation is a new system in California, which creates a legal framework for corporations to focus on the triple bottom line, environmental, social, as well as financial impact. So we have a legal mandate, actually, not to maximize profits, to create a social and environmental benefit. And then, B Corp is a great thing, it's almost like certified organic, right? They're an independent entity that oversees business practices to make sure that you are adhering to that triple bottom line mandate. And I think a powerful statement is here in that quote, that businesses must create value for society, not just for shareholders. They need to offer a concrete, market-based, and scalable solution. So that sentence in itself encapsulates why we created, why we founded California Clean Power, because we believe we can bring the expertise and the efficiency and the scalability of the private sector, am I going long? I'm sorry. To help communities, small communities, establish a community choice program of their own, so they don't have to overcome these barriers, and they don't have to have the only option available to them of joining another program that might not represent their own values. So, all of that high level, I'll run through the details of what we actually provide as a service, and then we can close it out and talk about anything that you'd like to talk about. I mentioned before that we are self-funded. So what that means is we provide all of the capital investment upfront, and it's not loaned, it's not deferred, it's all investment that we make because we believe in community choice, and we believe over the long-term, a long-term partnership, that it would be mutually beneficial to do so. So we provide all of the startup costs, all the operational costs, we collateralize energy procurement, we handle community outreach, we establish a call center, a website, handle customer noticing. And again, there's no financing or financial guarantees. We do it all. And we have a very clear and set-defined fee for service. And so you know exactly how much we are making as a company, providing service to your community. Again, we are full service, and so there's nothing that is left off of the table that you have to pick up as a jurisdiction. We provide all of the staff and infrastructure that is, you know, as frequently as a daily activity, forecasting and scheduling energy, and as infrequently as annual filings. All of that staff work and infrastructure we provide to your jurisdiction. Oh, actually, I want to say there one, thank you. Having said that, your jurisdiction maintains complete oversight and control over the program. So whereas we would develop an annual filing for you, it is still incumbent upon your jurisdiction, this is a public program. Community choice is always a public program, no matter how it's operated. And so any filing goes through your body, your council. And so, nothing is kept out of the daylight. We covered local control through your, it's okay. Through all decisions being made, we will support all of these. We will provide updates and work with your staff in order to make sure that you're prepared for the rate-setting process on an annual basis. But again, we provide all of that internally for you. Okay. And then transparency. We strive for transparency, absolutely do. Our revenue model, fully disclose our revenue model, it is a set fee. It is a lower fee than you would get apples to apples if you were to create a public agency on your own. And we do that in order to open up the market for smaller communities like Morro Bay. It's just simply too expensive for Morro Bay to create an agency on its own and still offer lower rates than PG&E. And so we form this model specifically to work with smaller communities. We are completely accessible. When I say that we are your staff, I mean it. We are your staff. We implement your direction. We do not impose any decision-making on jurisdictions. We are there for you. And then finally, I wanted to make the point on renewable transparency and environmental transparency. We prioritize what's called category-one energy. And what that is, is essentially the gold standard of renewables. It's renewable energy that you can point to, where you can see that it came from a local source. That might not be San Luis Obispo local, but it's California. You can point to it, you can touch it, you can smell it. It's not an accounting trick. And then greenhouse gas emissions. We write into our contract that we will never provide service that actually increases emissions. And so you know, right out of the gate, working with us, that environmentally, you have a strong program. I'll quickly run through this model because I think it, while it's busy, it highlights a few things, and then I'll wrap up.
Thanks.
Starting on the top, what this diagram shows is essentially how the dollar moves through your program. And it covers on the right side of the slide, all of the activity that goes in to your program. So if you start at the top with your blue man up there, that ratepayer, that customer, pays their bill, and a portion of it goes to the utility to cover transmission and delivery and other costs. And then the portion that's related to community choice is broken off, all right? And that portion comes into a secured account that's established for your program, that's distinct and separate from all other funds. And then out of that secured account comes the cost of energy, our service fee, utility tax, and other fees that are associated with operating your program. And the cost of energy, I want to note that it can be as high as 90% of all program costs, so that's the overwhelming chunk of that. And then after that, all net revenues flow directly back to your jurisdiction. So those are available for your jurisdiction to do any number of things, decrease rates even further in the coming year, build reserves, hire staff, invest in local projects, address other community priorities. Okay, so that was just an example of what a community choice program could look like in Morro Bay. You know, it could be, yep, okay, there you go. But it's just an illustrative example of what you could have. You know, you could have 33% renewable with 100% option. You could plan to, over time, increase that baseline to 50% renewable over a course of a number of years. You could incentivize rates to attract green business and other economic development. You could provide You could provide low income, further discounts for low-income residents as well, and for seniors. And you can direct that surplus revenue into building resilience in your community. And of course, if people don't like that, if they don't like all those benefits, they can always receive service from PG&E. So, I'll skip over the next couple, and thank you very much for being here. I know that this is very high-level on a complicated topic, so I'm here for you, anytime, to go into greater detail, either now or in the future, and looking forward to working with you through the process.
Great. Mr. Rummel, thanks for the presentation, and we could move on to questions, but considering the presentation, are there any questions from right or left? And we also have the opportunity to agendize this, if we want to dive into more details that would allow more questions in the future.
Yeah, thank you. One question would be, Mr. Rummel, you did prepare a draft feasibility analysis for Morro Bay?
Yeah.
We've received copies of those, will that be made available to the public as well?
It's, that's your document, so it absolutely is available as much as you'd like it to be. I will say that, you know, it's a few months old, market conditions have changed, and since the time that we produced that, we've brought on new staff, and we've adjusted our contract offering a bit. And so, what I'd really like to do is delve into the financial details and the market details into that, and maybe produce an addendum that gives you a little bit more financial information, run different pro forma scenarios, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Rummel, thanks very much for coming down, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, and thanks for sharing the presentation for this agenda, and we'll move on to public comment. And public comment, we start with our business spot, and for our business spot tonight, we have Janee Franklin from House of Juju. If you'll please open up or lead us into our public comment, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Well, hello, guys, thanks for inviting me. Jan, thank you for this opportunity. House of Juju is a family-owned and operated restaurant here in Morro Bay. We also have our original location in Clovis, which has been open, December will be two years. House of Juju, we're known for our six signature gourmet burgers, and we also offer sliders of our burgers, so you're able to try a few of those, and also a burger-in-a-bowl option for those that don't want all the carb of the burger, but you still really want to get that burger in. We also have salads, wraps, flatbreads, we have a variety of beers, we have nine taps, and we rotate those, so we try to get something new in for those that want to come try new things. And, you know, being family-owned and operated, we just love sharing our story, and a lot of people ask, what, you know, the name, House of Juju, what is that? Well, my mom's name is Julie, we have nine grandkids that call her Juju. She felt, she was a little too young with the first one to be grandma, so Juju came about, and with my brothers and my dad, they love to cook, our family has a passion for serving others. We put those things together and created this wonderful experience of House of Juju. We haven't had any experience in the restaurant industry, so we just kind of went for it, and it has turned out to be something great. Coming here, this opportunity of our restaurant in Morro Bay, we, you know, know it's a touristy area, but, you know, that's great, we love meeting people from all over the world, but what is our main focus is our locals. Because for me, being at the restaurant all week long, I look forward to seeing familiar faces like some of you tonight, and, you know, being on a first-name basis, really being able to connect with others, so that relationship is huge for us. Let's see, what else can I tell you about House of Juju? We, our Clovis location, they have just taken off, they've succeeded, so that's why we decided, give it a shot over here, bring something new to Morro Bay. Things just kind of fell in place, and we're here now. And my husband and I got the opportunity to come open this location, and things are going great, we appreciate the support, we appreciate the community opening arms to us and bringing us in. And yeah, I mean, if you're interested in ordering online, or by phone, for a to-go order, you could always find our menu on our Facebook, just House of Juju by the Bay on our Facebook, call us at (225) 1-8225-1828, that's right, yeah. Or just come on in, we're located where the Whale's Tale used to be, I know it's a familiar spot for everyone, right across from Wavelengths, and I'd love to see some of your faces and serve you soon. And thanks again for allowing me to be here tonight.
Janee, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to town. And with that, we'll open up public comment, for those who'd like to speak to any item not on the agenda, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Glenn Silaway, I'm here tonight as a member of the Board of the Historical Society of Morro Bay, and I want to tell you, we've got a number of things going on, we're getting really active, and I want to invite everybody to join us. You can find us online at historicalmorobay.org, and get involved, and let's grow. We've got some ways to help this community be better, and be more fun, and connect our past with our present. I've got some specific things. First thing, this is Local History Month, so there is a display right now in the library, a nicely remodeled new library, that you can go see, there's some mystery items in there that you may help us solve. I hope you will go take a look at the pictures and see if you can identify some of the people that we don't yet know who they are. So, if you've been around here for a while, give us some help. Second thing, again, this year, we're sponsoring a group for the Coastal Cleanup, this is coming up, September 19th. We're going to meet at Tydland's Park, 8:45 a.m. It's going to be a fun event, it's going to do some good for the community, you don't have to bring anything but your energy, because we're going to supply all the tools and all the things you need to help this worthwhile cause. Third thing, coming up, in this room, Veteran Memorial Hall's an appropriate place for this, November 8th, noon to 2, or 1,200 to 1,400 hours, if you're keeping track, there's going to be a presentation about World War II history in Morro Bay, it was a pivotal event for this community. We're serving lunch, and we want to honor the people who served us, and the people who lived here during the war as well. So, we hope that you can all show up, right here, November 8th, 12 to 2 o'clock. Finally, we have an ongoing project called the Hidden History Project. There's 12 or 15 of us who get together regularly, or we do individual research, we're delving into some topics that are commonly known around here, but maybe not completely known, like what happened during World War II, how did it change us, where were the changes? And we're eventually going to start putting this content together in a series of really nice interpretive panels, professionally-done panels, we put up around town, that creates a walking tour for both visitors and for our residents. To learn more about where we came from, stand in front of this building, you see it as it is now, and as it was, and what it did, to try to connect us across time and place. So, we're busy, we're getting busier, we'd like to have more of you join us, and I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Public comment is open, please come forward. Public comment?
I'm going to do this. Mr. Mayor, my name is Marvin Victor, can I come to you?
Come on forward to the mic, you have, for public comment, just state your name.
My name is Marvin Victor, and I live at 498 Orchus Street, Morro Bay. I have some pictures I'd like to give to you, so you can look at them while I talk, if I may.
If you can, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to put them on overheads?
There are three different pictures there, and they're numbered up in the left-hand corner, one through three, and it depicts the potholes in front of my house. For four years, over four years now, I've been, are you taking them away? Oh, thank you. For the last four years, we've been coming to the city and asking for those potholes to be filled. All the streets in North Morro Bay have been done, except Orchus and Panorama. And we were told that, four years ago, I was told that Orchus is going to cost too much because the potholes are too bad, but we'll have the money in it next year, we'll have the money in the budget, but not this year. A year later, I went, hey, you didn't fix them. Well, we don't have the money this year, we'll have it next year. Now, these pictures, as you can see in that, that pothole is over 22 feet long. It's also taking away the berm, you can see it's circled where they're, and over by where I'm sitting, the berm is being washed away. The arrows show the way the water comes down Panorama Streets, turns on Orchus, and hits that berm, and it's really tearing it out. If the berm goes, it's going to send that whole yard there into my driveway there, and it's going to flood out my house. So, I'm very concerned. If, you know, you can say, well, you can put up sandbags. I'm 77 years old, I cannot lift sandbags and do that, so I, and I know that it's going to be hard for the city to get bids and get it done this year, but I really appreciate sandbags being put down and protecting that berm until it can be done next year, I can live with that. Picture number two, that's picture number two, that's the width of the, that shows the width of those potholes, that's over six feet. That's a big pothole, and it also shows how the berm is being wiped out. Okay? Picture number three, I'm kind of nervous, I'm sorry.
You're doing great.
Picture number three shows I'm down grade, I'm down on Panorama Street, looking down from my house, and it shows the same 20, 22 feet, 10 inches, and there's, you can see the circle where the berm is being blown away. So, my thing is, I would really, the hot patching, I was told, three or four times, will not work, it has to be dug up and redone. And I'm scared I'm going to lose a lot of my property and get my house flooded if it's not done. So, I've talked to Mike Wilcox, Maintenance Supervisor, and that's the man I've been talking to the last few years, who keeps telling me it's not in the budget, but we'll get it in the budget next year. We've been, that house is, we've been in that house, it was built by my wife, 20, a little over 20 years ago, so we've been in the community for a long time. We pay our taxes, but we don't feel we're getting our money's worth with that, we really do, and by being pushed off every year, it just doesn't leave a good taste in our mouth. And I know, we voted for you guys, and we'd like you to help us out now. So, thank you very much for your time.
It's Mr. Vicker, is that correct?
Yes, Marvin Victor.
Marvin Vicker?
Marvin Victor, and this young lady said she would take those and have some copies, and I have notes on both, on the other side, so you can see, and then, so everybody can get copies of that. And, oh, one other thing, I would appreciate it if I can get a call back, or a letter back, or something, letting me know what you're going to do, so I don't say, ah, and pull my hair out. Thank you very much.
And you'll leave your phone number there, is that correct, your contact, so people...
No, I will leave it, though. Should I see her now?
Yep, that'd be great, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Vicker.
Hello, I am Sandra Santini, and I also, we're married, and I also live at 498 Orchus Street. My husband explained how the situation was, the problem with the broken asphalt is, and how it's destroying the berm. Well, another thing that's happening, every time trucks go up, make a right turn, more broken asphalt gets sprayed and put into our yard, so I'm constantly keep picking up pieces of broken asphalt. And, and, and big trucks come up there, the big garbage trucks come up, and also the PG&E trucks, all the repair trucks that come up in that area, can't gain traction when they hit that corner, and their wheels spin, and it just makes the asphalt break up more and more and more, and nothing is done about it. I've been a resident of this city for 35 years, and I have been active in city government, I was former, once chairman of the Solid Waste Commission, and so I know, it also helped us to start the recycling program here. So, I have been active, and I've been a fan of Morro Bay, and a true believer in what's going on here. But I want to point out something that's worrying me a great deal, and that is that, and I don't have the exact date, but sometime in the 80s, there was a huge storm and a broken water main. There used to be a water main that went along the top of Panorama Street, and during the storm, their water washed down, and forced several houses off their foundations. And I, like I say, I don't, this was before the time that we owned, we built our house, but I'm pointing this out because this is a very hilly area, and water runs down, and even though they blame that particular problem on the breakage of the pipe that was carrying water along Panorama Street, a strong storm could do something similar. I don't want that to happen to me. I know that when we bought that property up in the hills, we were asked by the Building Department to follow certain rules and make sure that we have had a solid foundation. We followed all the rules. We even had to hire a geologist, who told us about the type of ground that was, and what to expect, and what to do to avoid any further problems. And the major problem right now is there's a possibility, we've had a drought for years, but there's a possibility that we have severe storms this year. I'm very concerned about that. We live in the hills, they need special consideration. I don't want to be inundated.
Okay.
And I'm asking for your help.
Thank you very much. I don't think our three-minute clock is working, but we do have three minutes for public comment, so if it seems as though I'm, I think we, I just might ask you as we get to that, to help through that, so if you'll help me with that, I appreciate it. Welcome, Red.
Thank you. My name's Robert Davis. One of the things that I enjoy about the cloisters development is that we have a lot of open space, and along with that, we have some nice interpretive panels along the pathways. Well, over the years, those original panels faded out, and one of our North Morro Bay residents, Dawn Beatty, took charge of replacing the panels. She had some help, she had a lot of help, but she's the person who made it happen. She got some help from graphics people and local photographers, she used the verbiage from the original panels, she created graphic files that she handed over to the city, and the city went ahead and had the panels manufactured by the original vendor. As you can see, they, well, my photography is not the best, they are bright, informative, and professional. All of those photographs are taken by local photographers, they are Jeffrey Bacon, Michael Baird, Dawn Beatty, Bill Bowden, Joyce Corey, Jerry Kirkhart, and Marlon Harms. What I want to do tonight is to publicly acknowledge Dawn Beatty's work in making this happen, and thank her on behalf of the people of Morro Bay.
Thank you, Red. Thank you, Dawn.
Good evening, Council. My name's Mike Timbroski, 1121 Main Street. I'm here tonight primarily because I had not received the type of responses I would have hoped I would have received in the last two years. At 1163 North Main, there is a, no bicycling, no parking sign that's missing at the bike lane. I've contacted law enforcement and reported the violation in progress more than a half a dozen times in two years. I've talked to patrol officers in their vehicles directly, and informed them of the issue, and I've had direct contact with City Hall. It would seem that the hole is still in the ground where the sign's been removed, there's just no sign there anymore. It's the building in front of, it's in front of, if you're familiar with it, it has tight It's the building in front of, it's in front of, if you're familiar with it, it has tight parking. It's mysterious that it's not there, but who knows why it's not there. As the earlier comments about the new bicycle lane and pedestrian lane along the Embarcadero, there was two seating areas that were created along that pedestrian pathway and bike pathway, inviting people to sit down, relax, enjoy the vistas, take the load off their feet, so to speak. And unfortunately, they didn't put trash receptacles at those two resting points. It only seemed common and logical that they would be there. People tend to sit there, and where the people sit, there tends to be debris accumulating. And adjacent to the west side, pardon me, the south side of the creek, right where the bridge crosses a little more creek, the, there's appeared three large dump, equivalent to dump truck loads of debris that's been dumped there. The bicycle path and pedestrian way and the travel lane for vehicles is immensely popular. I would, I run and/or bike, and bike on that multiple times every day. I run every day, bike every day. And there's eight or 10 times as many people using that stretch of the Embarcaderos that previously used it. And so there's, the parking, which primarily used to be what would be west of the new pedestrian area, is now going north over near the Harbor Department office. And that's where that debris is being, has been dumped. And it just makes a health and safety issue. Somebody's going to get caught up in it with their vehicle, they're going to crawl on it and injure themselves, and they're going to be litigious towards the city. Another thing I've noticed, because there are so many more people using the, that area of Morro Bay and the main beach, is there probably needs to be some consideration made for length of vehicle restriction from Morro Dunes RV Park entrance going south. You'll see people drive down there with big fifth wheels behind their trucks. That means they could be 45 to 50 feet in length, and then down there trying to make a, turn a simple three-point turn into a 22-point turn, because they're down there and they can't get out. It would seem that a 24, 26-foot limit might be more appropriate.
Martin, I didn't get your last name. Could you leave your name and contact information?
It's Mike Dombrowski.
Excuse me, Mike. Can you leave your contact information with our city clerk? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Irons and council members. I'm Jan Serby. I'm speaking tonight both on behalf of Morro Coast Audubon Society and myself as a Morro Bay resident. I first want to thank you for putting the possible ban of extended polystyrene on the agenda tonight, and then ask that you consider passing a ban, which would benefit birds, other wildlife, as well as improving public health and quality of life for the residents of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public comment for items not on the agenda. If you can't stay for those items, please come forward, but this is, thank you.
My name's Karen Perry, and I live on Estero Avenue in Morro Bay. My husband and I were both here, and he had to leave a little early. The issue that I'm supporting is the same one that Jan just mentioned, enforcing a ban on polystyrene materials, not just for the city of Morro Bay. Will have an effect on this. It affects everywhere. My husband this morning, when I said, "You know, I'm going to this meeting tonight," and he said, "What's it about?" And I told him, he goes, "It's a no-brainer. How could we be having that? How can we be doing that?" So I'm just here, on his behalf as well as my own, to say, "Please, seriously, consider enforcing this ban for our city of Morro Bay." Thank you.
Thank you. I know the polystyrene agenda items on the end of the agenda, so for those, I'm assuming that those can't stay for the agenda, are coming forward to speak to that, but that is on the agenda, it's the last item on the agenda.
Hi, I'd like to speak on D-2, and thank you very much for letting me speak now. There's no way I can make it that late. I will be watching at home, though. My name is Linda Merrill. Dear, good evening, dear mayor and council. My name is Linda Merrill, and I'd like to ask if I may speak on D-2. Thank you. Please include an ordinance regulating polystyrene products in Morro Bay. We have had testimony and information stating this product harms our wildlife. So please do support this. Also, I want to mention, and this isn't on the agenda, there is a state senate bill supporting continued protection of our endangered sea otters in the state senate. So if you all could pull that up, State Senator Monina is supporting that. So if you could please show your support for that, I'd really appreciate it. Also, I have something on the consent agenda. Can I say that too, or do you want me to wait?
If you want to get it all out now, then we'll...
Thank you so much. Thank you for being understanding. It's regarding A6, and at one of the WRF CAC meetings, I asked that Mr. Livelyck or somebody establish a, like, bookcase or some sort of a file cabinet of hard copies of information regarding our new wastewater treatment plant. So I'd like to ask if that is available anywhere, and it's hard for me to get it on the computer.
Thank you.
So thank you so much.
Thanks, Linda.
Have a good evening. And I'm sorry Matt isn't here, and I certainly support him being supported with not being here.
Thanks, Linda. Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. I think there are a couple of questions. Maybe, Rob, can you explain how we're fixing our potholes and the Notify Me program and Let Us Know program, and how the folks that gave testimony here about Orcas, and how our pavement management program is addressing potholes? I think at one point, we budgeted an increased amount just to address potholes, and maybe you can talk about how that's working and how you would identify this particular situation and rectify it.
The pavement management program addresses pretty much major repairs, but that doesn't solve the problem of potholes. They still need to be fixed. So this is last year's budget. We budgeted enough money for basically four tons a week. That area looks like it's going to probably take a couple of tons of asphalt to fix. So I think it's completely doable. This is the first time I've heard about the Orcas craters. So, but if folks feel that, a simple way to get your name on, or your favorite pothole on the list, is through the city's website, the Let Us Know program. It is on the left-hand link, Let Us Know. It's soon to be replaced by some other fancier program that you take your iPhone out and snap a picture of it and automatically gets sent to wherever I'm standing, or something like that. If that doesn't work for you, give me a call. 772-6569 is my direct phone number. So those are three ways to let the appropriate public works staff know that a situation's not being resolved. So Let Us Know also includes a copy to myself and our city manager, Mr. Buckingham, so that we can track those items.
Great, thanks for that. And how about, I think there's a sign that Mike...
I'm looking on Google Earth right now, and there is a no parking sign there. It must have gone away. I haven't noticed it missing. It is in a bike lane, and I don't believe you're allowed to park in a bike lane anyway, but we'll make sure it gets put up. Probably the quickest way to get a sign replaced that is missing is not to contact the police department, because they have other things that they're working on that might have a higher level of importance. But again, same contact information for signs. As for potholes, Let Us Know, my direct line, 772-6569, or my email, rlivelyck@morro-bay.ca.us. And we can take care of that, those sign issues. Trash cans on the new pedestrian pathway, I believe there are trash cans placed at either end of it. We were hoping that folks could not deposit their trash in the middle. It is a relatively short walk to either end. Started running again today, so I ran it, and actually made it both, all the way across there, so it can be done. So, not to make light of that, but there are trash receptacles at either end. It's just hard to service ones in the middle there, because the Morro Bay Garbage Company does service our trash receptacles, and it's hard for them to get a truck. If you know, back to the potholes. If you notice, I'm going to just use this as an educational moment, the side of those, the asphalt, if you look at the sectional view, it looks like there's only about an inch of asphalt over that red rock. That's because there is only an inch of asphalt. That's how the Morro Bay streets were built back in the day, is an overlay over an old Red Rock County road. So that's why they're failing, and to really fix them, it, we need more than just fill potholes. I think that was it on the public works front.
Before anybody else have any other questions, I just had a question on, is there, I'm looking at my notes here, and one of the responses was, "Not in the budget," was response, one of the city responses. So how can we, as far as Let Us Know, how can we help community members that are saying, "Hey, we're asking questions about our potholes"? How can they convey that information into our annual budget workshop and our Public Works Advisory Board to ensure that, because I know our Public Works Advisory Board does a great job on that component of public works and streets? And how can those people be informed on how to get more information to, through our Public Works Advisory Board and to city council, other than to say it's not in the budget? How can we help them with that?
Sure. This year, this next spring, early next spring, probably March timeframe, we'll be having our third street summit that'll be going in front of the Public Works Advisory Board, that talks about upcoming paving programs, how we're addressing these issues. That's a very good venue to let your voice be heard and to identify your favorite pothole or your favorite torn-up street section. So the street summit, we'll do some enhanced outreach before that meeting, rather than just using the standard methods of agenda gets posted to the website. But if you do come to our website frequently, as the mayor mentioned, there's another application on there called Notify Me, and you can sign up for the Public Works Advisory Board or any other advisory board, JPA, WRF CAC, Planning Commission, Harbor Advisory Board, and be notified anytime there's an issue that's going to those boards to discuss. So that's another way to become informed in the city.
Thank you. Those were all the questions I had from my notes. Anybody else? Christine?
Thank you. I think that I just wanted to mention that, you know, I think Mr. Victor and Mr. Dombrowski and along with Ms. Santini, I mean, I think it takes a lot to come out to public comment for maybe your first time, so I just want to ensure that, I know they left their contact information, so I just want to ensure that someone will definitely get back to them and kind of find out where exactly those trash cans were that he mentioned, because I think they're maybe somewhere else, rather than on that strip. Just, that was just my understanding, taking notes. So I just want to ensure that they will get a follow-up, and if, you know, someone can take a look at the Orcas situation. I mean, they are rather large potholes, so, I mean, we all live with potholes every day, but to just respond back, so can we be assured that that will happen?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christine. Any other questions? John?
A couple of comments. One, thank you, Red, for recognizing Dawn. Dawn, I wanted to also personally recognize you for the work that you did out there and took on your own, and just say how much we appreciate that kind of community service, and so thank you for that. The other issue is, I just didn't want to make, I wanted to make sure it didn't fall through the cracks, Linda's comments regarding the hard copies being available.
Yeah, thanks.
So I'm not sure where that falls, but if somebody could make a note on that, not only do we have the nice online references, but we do need to have hard copy references available as well, so.
I can give you a brief update on that. We're the former transit center that was the temporary library that is now becoming a conference room and council office. Our WRF team will have a office set up in there, and that's where we're planning on putting that library. But there's a little bit of work that needs to be, get done to get that ready. So it's in the works to get those hard copies at one central location.
Noah?
Yes, thank you, and thanks, Mr. Livelyck, for mentioning the Let Us Know. Our budget document also does have a very nice segment on pavement management and where our budget's allocated for streets and the plan going forward. And then you also do have a good link to the pavement management plan on the website.
Yes.
Which gives a great background of why we are where we are and the plan going forward. And anyone who's interested in that should definitely review those documents. So the Let Us Know component and modular is a very great, important place for people to submit requests, like we heard tonight. Goes directly to the staff member that can respond, and you do get the tracking number, as Mr. Livelyck said. So there's an opportunity for some two-way, and we're planning on proving that even further.
Great. I think Christine, you had one more question?
Just one more response from Mr. Livelyck. I'm just going to make a plug for the library as being a good depository for hard copies of these, these forms and these reports, because it's already someplace that we do deliver documents. And I just, it's open probably more hours, including weekends, and I think at least one evening during the week. I think that just might be a little more convenient than an office that may or may not have someone there business hours. And if you could work with the manager of the library, I know maybe things need to be cleaned out a bit even, but I just might make a plug for that, because the access for the public is so much greater. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. That'll close comments from council. Thanks for those, and thanks for everybody's comments out there. And we'll move on to consent agenda, and at this time, we will open a public comment for consent agenda, for anybody that'd like to speak to any items on consent. Anybody? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. I think we addressed A6. Did we address A6 okay? Not necessarily to pull that. I don't have any items to pull. Do you have an item to pull? A6? Okay, Noah? A6? Anybody else? None? So take a motion to approve our consent agenda with the exception of item A6. Motion by Christine, second by John. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0. A6. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to, to get my notes out here, on A6, which is our routine update and report on our WRF, first of all, thank you for the continuous detailed report that we get, and thank you for the inclusion. Now, on the back of that last document showing the actual... Now, on the back of that last document showing the actual expenditures and somewhat of a comparative budget and cost flow analysis, so I appreciate that being added to the report on a routine basis. Just a couple of questions, as I was looking through and trying to tie some things together, and possibly this could be directed for Mr. Livick. I was noting on the expenditure for JFR Consulting Amendment Number Four, which appears in your didactic report, they're not paginated, but on June 20th, 2014, let's see, I think it was, no, excuse me, on, let me find the right page here, February 25th, 2015, JFR Consult Amendment Number Four for $44,279 to assist with fatal flaw analysis, which I noted is a paid expenditure. And with the new cost report, we have a fatal flaws section, under which I believe we have a number of different dollars allotted. And I'm wondering how that fits in with that, what that accomplished in addition to this? Did that contribute to this process? And maybe I could just get some clarity on that. And I saw it for the first time with, again, this nice new format that we have here that showed costs.
The work that JFR Consulting did for the fatal flaws analysis was really to get us rolling on that work. They identified potential fatal flaws, attended WRF, various WRF-CAC meetings where we discuss those fatal flaws, assisted in the preparation of documents to seek out these consultants, provided analysis of those fatal flaws, that assisted in those consultants to get moving. So, they set up the groundwork to get the specialized consultants such as Kevin Mark for Biology, Fugro for Hydrogeology, and Far Western for Archaeological Work, along with Larry Walker and Associates, associates looking at the salts in our waste streams. So, they set the groundwork for that. Both Mike Nunley and John Rickenbach participated in that work.
I guess, and so what stood out for me is that as an amendment and being noted on that page, I guess, is that something that would normally come before council and be approved or would have been approved at that time? Or is that something that just internally isn't add-on to the existing contract? And the reason I asked is that it's almost 50% of the original contract and it also represents about 50% of the total fatal flaw assessment that's going to be performed in the future. And so, again, not questioning the integrity of the value of what we got, but just trying to understand all of that and how it fits together. It just fell out as a seemingly high cost and I just want to be cognizant of that as we move forward.
The, as far as the costs go, council authorized the Public Works Director to make certain decisions on this project by passing a resolution a couple of years ago. And that falls within the threshold that staff would be authorized to make on this project. So, that's where that came from. Probably 2020 hindsight should have had this cost accounting all along.
Yeah.
It does have a very useful purpose in showing where we're at on this project. It is a large amount, well, relatively large amount compared to the contract costs, but a relatively small amount compared to overall project costs.
Thank you for that. And I do agree, and I primarily bring it up for future accounting and the ability to track dates and times and relate those maybe a little more clearly to this beginning report, which is attachment number two. And so, the suggestion I have is that maybe the format of that could be changed to the date, the item or service, the entity providing, which could be captured in, I guess, the summary, like site alternatives, analysis, site preference selection. And then, the approval dates that could be listed there on that same page, obviously the total amount, the amount paid and the remaining contractual amount that was paid. It's hard to go back and look at the report now that we have this wonderful new report. And so, rather than having you write all that down, maybe, Rob, I could work with you, just give you some, a sense of what I'm talking about and how it might be able to look a little more clear to all of us as it's reported out on a monthly basis. And then, I had a question on Kestrel Consulting, the funding consultant. I noticed, let's see, on June 15th, 2014, there was an approval or a contract executed with Kestrel in the amount of $20,530 to develop funding strategies for the WRF. I do remember since joining council in December, being at one meeting where one presentation was made and hearing an initial report from the consultant. And the question that I have is that on the bottom of attachment two, we have, second to the last line, Kestrel Consulting, SRF and Prop 1 Support Applications, another 65-762, which has yet to be expended. And my question is, is the remainder of the 83-80 going to be applied to that? Is that going to be spent still? Or how do those two fit together? And I guess lastly, how was the consultant selected? Because I couldn't find it in the notes.
So, the 83-80 was not spent, so it rolls back into the fund balance.
Okay.
The 65-752 is a new contract for assistance in preparation of our SRF planning loan application along with our Prop 1 grant application, which I believe there's an item that you just approved on the agenda authorizing that application. How were they selected? They were recommended by our project management team. They've done the similar work for many municipalities in California, including the Advanced Water Treatment Purification Plant in Oxnard. They secured a large portion of their funding. Ms. Reed is very familiar with the state board, has a good relationship with their staff and is very good at what she does. So, we felt it appropriate that we continued using Kestrel in the funding assistance realm.
Great. Okay. Good. And so, in the future, since we have rather large expenditures that will now be accruing, beginning with the program management expenses that were approved, obviously, I think hopefully working with that new format, we'll be able to more clearly tie that. I just found it difficult to go back and find the dates and times and pull that. And I do realize that this was an initial report and this is a new report and I thank you for moving in that direction, but I think it can be significantly more detailed and we could make it more relevant for council to be able to follow costs. So, I'd be happy to help out and work with you for some changes in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Noah?
Yes, thank you. And I think it is important to point out, you raised some good points. We, as a council, did have quite a bit of discussion over the course of multiple meetings regarding the fatal flaws analysis and encouraging that to be accomplished, knowing that that's work that needed to be done and will help us ensure that we are pursuing the most viable projects. So, we did have some good conversations about that, but your point about tracking how that, those funds are being spent is well-made. I was also interested in asking Mr. Livick to review here on the near-term schedule towards the end of your staff report. There are some rather important public outreach and engagement opportunities coming up and if you wouldn't mind just mentioning some highlights of those?
Sure. In the near-term schedule, we will be returning to council at your next meeting on the 22nd of this month with a presentation from Michael Nunley and Associates regarding the public outreach plan. So, that will lay out the approach where, and provide dates and input opportunity for the public. We'll talk about identifying stakeholders, having stakeholder interviews and how that process will work. The, we're working right now in negotiating a contract with the Sequel Consultant that was selected based on interviews from both staff and members from our Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee. That consultant was ESA out of Los Angeles and they were, had the, the most appropriate propose or statement of qualifications and they prepared a draft scope of work that we're looking to refine. You might remember ESA, they were the ER consultants on the former project, so they're very familiar with the details of Morro Bay and can get up to speed very quickly. That will come to council for award, the first meeting in October on the 13th. And then, we'll get them moving right away, assuming that we do award a contract. Project Delivery Workshop will be, I believe it's a Saturday, the 17th of October. I don't know that we have a time set for that. And then, Facilities Master Plan workshops where, you just wouldn't believe how fast Black and Beach is working on this. We'll be seeing some preliminary information from them in the October-November timeframe and they are looking to have the Facilities Master Plan wrapped up so that we can kick off the environmental review right after the first of the year. So, that's the, one of the key steps is, the Facilities Master Plan serves as the project description for the environmental document.
Okay. All right. Noah, thanks. I just had one, do you have a question?
Just one question and discussion for council. And this is our first report from Mr. Nunley in this and just wanted to entertain the thought of having kind of a quarterly report from Mike on this and then also kind of being considerate of cost, because I imagine as a consultant, he'd be, you know, that's an additional cost for us. But I just wanted to generally have that discussion with council, whether or not we'd want to entertain doing some sort of quarterly with Mr. Nunley doing this updating for us and in particular, including our WRF-CAC Chair to do a WRF-CAC update for us as well. I'd like to, I know we're going to have a joint meeting and I've reached out to our Chair to see what the possibilities are, to have our Chair come and do kind of a quarterly update from that body itself. So, I just wanted to entertain that and at least get some conversation going on that to see what, how receptive we are, maybe get some feedback from staff on these comments as well. But I know it was fairly, it was met pretty positively as far as having a WRF-CAC Chair come and do a quarterly update and just give us that. So, just wanted to throw that brief discussion out there for council members and get feedback and direction.
If I could just add a thought that I had during your laying out that scenario. Mr. Nunley will be coming before us several, many times over the next eight years and perhaps, rather than sticking to a firm quarterly basis on his update, we could be a little flexible and if he's going to be here for another purpose, have him do that update at that, that time. That way, we're not adding meeting time onto the scope. Maybe see how that works and if that doesn't work, then we'll, we'll look to a contract amendment for that.
That's the kind of input I was looking for. Thanks. But I would like to entertain and, you know, maybe it's more appropriate at the joint meeting with WRF-CAC, but, you know, bring in our WRF-CAC Chair to do that presentation. Just give, you know, their update, just, you know, that, I think that's, that's important. I think it'd be great to have that input. So, any comments from either side here?
Fully support that idea.
You know, anytime I'm responsible for looking at $9 to $14 million worth of expenditures, I want to kind of know what's going on. So, I do absolutely agree, at least quarterly. And if we can use times when normally he would be here, that would be great, but no less than quarterly. And I would love to hear from the Chair of our WRF-CAC group as well.
Yep. Great. Thanks, Christine.
Yeah, I think that just as a reminder, we, council, a year ago encouraged the reporting you're seeing on the consent as a way to keep track of the project. And so, it is very frequently put in front of this council in that report and this community to keep, to keep our eye on what is happening and what's happened between perhaps an item where we discuss it more deeply than having it on consent. So, there is a purpose for it being on consent, so that we're aware of it almost all the time. I would certainly encourage not just the WRF-CAC, but I think at our joint meeting, we could encourage all of the Chairs to come forward at times, you know, really any time and talk to us, because they're not really just telling us, they're telling the whole community who watch our meetings, what's happening on their boards. So, I would encourage all of them. Certainly, the WRF-CAC committee is working on our largest project, so that would make sense to focus on that, but I would just open it up to all of our Chairs. I think it would be a good opportunity for them, even, I mean, three minutes is three minutes. It'd be great to hear. And if they wanted to do a five-minute presentation, that would be okay too.
That'd be easy to work out.
As far as quarterly, we're going to see Mr. Nunley quite a bit at this upcoming outreach. But if we do want something specific, I would suggest that we do send him directly, the comments that, you know, Councilmember Heding had to refine the reporting, let Mr. Nunley know. It's probably a few keystrokes for him to make it more clear for us. And then, I think, I wouldn't want to add anything right now, because we're having him come this month and then in October doing, but perhaps, you know, November would be a good time to do a little bit deeper analysis as Mr. Heding was requested. That's what, that's my thoughts on that for now.
Great. Thanks for that. So, with that conclusion, I think we can, I think at the joint meeting, we can have further discussion with our WRF-CAC and reporting back to us on a more regular point. And with that, I would take a motion to approve item A6.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Heding, second by Mr. Smucker. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0. That concludes our consent agenda and why don't we just take a five-minute recess? We'll be, if council is up to that, council up for a five-minute recess, we can come back at 8:45 and we'll get started. 7:45. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, welcome back, folks, and we will move on to the next part on our agenda. Next part of the agenda is second reading and adoption of ordinances. Item C1 is the adoption of ordinance number 595, amending various provisions of Title V of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to business taxes. Recommendation to adopt, is to adopt ordinance 595 after reading the title only and waiving further reading. Ms. Layton?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and council members. So, tonight, we're gonna talk about the changes to the Morro Bay Municipal Code that relate to business tax. So, we're looking, it'll, we're gonna give us a little background. Actually, there are some expanded staff reports at the back of the room, and I've provided expanded staff reports.
Thank you, Susan, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for suggesting it, Mayor Irons. And of course, why are we doing this, what changes are being made, and tonight's recommendation. So, again, the expanded, the expanded staff reports are in the back. We had a discussion at the 5/26, May 26-15 council meeting regarding the revisions to this chapter, and there were two motions made. One of them was made by Councilmember Smuckler, who thought, and rest of council agreed, that we should put in a no tax for grocery receipts under $4,000, clarify the real estate professionals' section a little bit more clearly, to remove the expired amnesty, globally change the word "business license" to "business tax," and also "business tax certificate." And then clean up language, and a good example of that was changing the full-time equivalent calculation from 2,000 hours to 2,080, which 2,080 is the standard year for a full-time person. Motion number two is made by Councilmember Heading, and he and council agreed to affirm the general structure of the business tax system, also to treat independent contractors equally. So, the idea on that is provide the same treatment for someone who has a business in their own home as you would someone who's working under a registered business, like a hair salon. Also, to annually revisit and update the tax schedule and tax collector's memo to occur in February. Unfortunately, that can't happen in February, it's going to have to be in April, late April or early May, because we were not able to change the CPI date from March. So, while it would be, we'll still get it done early enough so that it's implemented in July. So, on August 25th, we had the first reading of the ordinance, and this ordinance makes necessary corrections to the Morro Bay Municipal Code. Council approved the first reading and scheduled the ordinance for adoption tonight. So, again, we've got, you know, what are we doing? Our idea is, because council directed us to do this, we received public input, and the public wants this, and it's also a good business practice to revisit policies, rules, and codes on a regular basis. They get outdated and stale. The changes, do you want me to go through all the changes again, Mayor Irons?
I'll entertain any questions from, from council on that. I thought it was great to, to bring the summary the way you have, so I sure, I sure appreciate it. Any other takings? If we're ready, I know it's the, the adoption tonight, and I think you're going, you're doing well, thank you.
Okay, so I'll continue. These are the, the changes that we have are, of course, license fee, license tax, going to business tax, and also to the, you know, license will always be a certificate. We changed some definitions, added some business tax certificate to describe the document, and also the independent contractors, and we're calling out the fact that these are people that do not receive a W2 from the place they work in, so that the hairdresser who works in the hair salon is not receiving a W2, that person is an independent contractor. We have, we have made some changes to Section 5.04.050. It was formerly license and tax payment required. We split it up for some clarity, and we did that in several sections, too. We, we had concepts that were in paragraphs, and it was hard for staff to read and actually implement them, so we broke them up to make them, you know, a little bit clearer. We did the same thing with 5.04.060, and we broke them up into A3 paragraphs, really made it much better for us. 5.04.065, we added to address the businesses without a fixed location, and to let people know that if you don't have a fixed location in town, there's no employee calculation required. 5.04.080, constitutional apportionment, we expanded that with another paragraph to address the appeal process for any complaints. 5.04.150, the determination of average number of employees, I mentioned that earlier in my example, but it's changing them from 2,000 hours a year to 2,080 hours a year. 5.04.275, the amnesty was repealed. It was established for a very short period of time, December 13 through March 13, 2015. It's expired, there's no reason to have it in the code. 5.04.320, concessions has been changed to independent contractor, and the language in the section is specific to that type of business. 5.08.040, we added farmers' markets and special events to the title. 5.08.080 splits the concepts up for clarity. 5.08.1.110 added the ability for nonprofits to be exempt from taxes by council, takes council action to do that. 5.08.150, again, separation for clarity. 5.08.170, real estate. What we did was, we separated the concepts for clarity, we did add some language to point out those people who are not realtors or property managers to make, so that they understand that they're covered by Section 5.8.08.020. 5.08.220 adds a low revenue exemption for businesses who grocery receipts are under $4,000. The other side of that is those people are, those people that qualify under that threshold do not have to come into City Hall at all and identify themselves. So, the recommendation is the city council to review and provide comments on ordinance 595, open and accept public comment, and make a motion for adoption of ordinance 595. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Layton. Any questions from council before we open to public comment? Seeing none, we'll open up for public comment for any, to want to speak on this item?
Hi, Robert Davis. I just have a question about the exemption for nonprofits. You said that there's the opportunity for council to exempt nonprofits from having to pay taxes. Is that like an individual petition for each, each nonprofit organization, or is that a blanket for all? I'd just like to ask for clarification as to how that would work. Thank you.
Thank you, Red.
Don Beatty, Morro Bay. Follow up on what Red said on nonprofits. I am, for one of the nonprofits that I'm on board of, we filled out the forms necessary, went out, but it was not very, hello, it was not very clear. I'm wondering if the wording has been made clear. That was one thing I was curious about. The other is, if you live in another town, you get a business license. That's the terminology that's used. So, if we don't get a business license in Morro Bay, does our terminology is that different now from another city? Why not? Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, and Susan, if you can help us respond to those questions?
Yes, I can. Section 5, Section 5.08.110, flea market vendors. That one has been, a section has been added that says, with respect to nonprofit organizations, the council can by resolution modify the taxes provided for in this section. So, the exemption called out, or the new called-out exemption is specific to flea markets. It's not a global, it's, it's not globally done, however, there is an exemption that has been in place for nonprofits, and that will continue. So, this was just one particular one that was called out.
Okay, great. Joe, you looked like you were prompting the button there, so I thought I'd...
I was gonna try to answer the other question.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Unless you wanted to answer it. The difference between business tax certificate and business license. The reason we wanted to make that change, and there are some communities that still call the thing that city issues when a business tax is paid, a business license, but there are several communities that call it a business tax certificate, because technically, a license is something that grants someone the right to do something, and that's not what a business tax process is all about. It's merely to collect business tax and provide a receipt, and the business tax certificate is a receipt that the tax has been paid. So, that's why we've changed that name.
Great. Thanks for that. Any further discussion from council? To my right, to my left, seeing none. Ms. Layton, I just want to thank you for the updated staff report and presentation all the way through, and with that, if there's no other discussion, I would move to adopt ordinance 595 of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, amending various provisions of Title V of Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to business taxes and waive further reading. That would be the motion. So, we have a motion by Mayor Irons, a second by Councilmember Smuckler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries 4-0. Thanks very much. Now, we'll move on to item C2. Item C2 is a one-year review of public off-the-boat commercial fish sales policy for public docks and piers. Recommendation is to review the staff recommendation and approve the permanent allowance of off-the-boat commercial fish sales on the city's public docks and piers. Mr. Andersby, I presume?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Irons and council. Yes, tonight, we have for you consideration of the off-the-boat fish sales policy. As you know, back in 2014, some fishermen approached the harbor, approached staff and the harbor advisory board to consider allowing off-the-boat fish sales, and not just their slips, but other public docks and piers. The harbor advisory board voted unanimously, unanimously to approve that, and I recommend that to the city council, and the city council in August of that year approved it, with the caveat that it'd be revisited in one year, to see if there are any issues that arose out of the use, and, and kind of have a review and see how well it was used. Over the past year, it was, I would say, lightly to moderately used. No real space really gelled is the place where everybody went to and looked for, but some of the fishermen did take advantage of it and did appreciate being able to go to Thailand, to Auckland, some other places, to sell their, their fish off the boat. No issues arose out of it, we didn't have any dock use conflicts. As you know, if you spend any time on the waterfront, you know, there's a lot more people around, a lot more people boating and kayaking and, and using our waters, and commercial fishermen mixing it in and selling the boat, selling fish off the boat, didn't cause any issues that we were ever aware of. So, we brought it back to the harbor advisory board at their August meeting a few weeks ago. They recommended, recommended to council to make it a permanent allowance. Staff is also recommending to make it a permanent allowance, which we would, if approved, would incorporate it into a, really a comprehensive revision of our Rules and Regulations Municipal Code, which we've been doing with the harbor advisory board for the past, I would say, six or so months. So, while we'd implement it now, if approved, we'd make it a permanent allowance, allowance in our rules and regulations, so it would be codified that way. And with that, that's my report, it's fairly simple, pretty straightforward.
Great, and any council, any questions from council, and then we'll go into public comment? Noah, you want to start off?
Yes, thank you. I just want to focus, my questions mostly here from Mr. Andersby in follow-up on the harbor advisory board discussion that you had, related to the marketing and public awareness of this program. We've created the legal space for this to happen, but like you mentioned, it really hasn't gelled into something that's growing, but it has the potential to. So, you had mentioned a couple in the harbor advisory board meeting, they had mentioned a couple of ideas about how to proceed with some additional marketing and outreach, and just curious to know how you, how you plan to roll that, or continue to roll with that conversation, and perhaps continue to evolve the program so that there's a marketing element that makes sense and helpful to help, to make this thing grow as much as it can.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smuckler. So, the main sort of area where people look for these off-the-boat sales, and it's really, works pretty well up in Half Moon Bay, and is more further down the road, is the Fishline app, which is an app you can get on your phone or on your pad, where the fishermen or the fish seller, if you go on there now, you'll see you have on his fish market on there quite a bit. He's not an off-the-boat guy, but he's a fish buyer that markets direct to the public as well, obviously, and so, that is the main place where we, we encourage people to look. When I get, when we get phone calls fairly regular, or people come in the office and, hey, where can I buy some salmon from the boat? We'll encourage them to look at Fishline, the Fishline app, and, but it takes the fishermen, they've got to make an effort to put, to register and put their information there, or the fish seller needs to do that as well. So, I think encouraging that and creating a better awareness of that is probably the number-one way in getting that marketing going. As we increase our Facebook and other Twitter and all that social media account-type things, I think that's another opportunity for the city to potentially get involved, or at least provide a forum for it. And then up in Half Moon Bay, I think what they do is, at the harbor office, they've got some kind of a board, and I don't know if it's just a chalkboard where the fishermen come and write things down. Certainly, something like that could possibly be used. Ideally, if we had an established place that was sort of the go-to, would be the ideal, that way, on any given day, if somebody wants to go buy some fish off the boat, and they don't really care what necessarily they're buying, they just want to have that experience of buying off the boat. If it was a one-stop shop place, that would be the best way to go, but it's gonna be tough, and as you know, you know, our salmon fishermen, if there's fish out front and they're in big enough numbers, they'll stay here, but usually, they're gone up north. Crab fishermen, the same way, Albacore, you know, we don't have a lot of, we have a lot of fishermen, and a lot of fishing activity, but there's not a lot of different species being landed that, that lend themselves to that off-the-boat sales on a regular enough basis, I don't think, to really get a place established, where you could go down every Saturday at 3 o'clock, say, and find something. So, it's gonna take the fishermen using Fishline and us potentially creating some other opportunities to make that awareness stronger.
Great, so, this will probably be a continued discussion with the harbor advisory board?
Yeah, I think discussion harbor advisory board and work in progress, working with our fishermen, and as you know, we've got three harbor advisory board fishermen represent as one primary and two alternatives, and they're very active, and we work closely with the fishermen's organization, the president, currently Tom Hafer, so we'll, we'll work to that end to try and, you know, use their ideas and try and implement their ideas as they bring them forward.
Okay, and I didn't hear any specific reference to the visitor center, but I know you've thought about that.
Yeah, visitor center, I mean, we're welcome to any and all suggestions, visitor center, Chamber of Commerce, all those sorts of places that do that kind of advertising.
Great, thanks.
John?
As I recall, Eric, there were some concerns about the birds making lots of noise and problem, causing problems. Have we seen anything like that as a result of this, when we have sales going on down by the dock or in that area?
No, really, the birds won't start jumping in unless there's some sort of processing or cleaning going on, which the fishermen to sell off the boat, they, they've got to really sell it in the round, otherwise, it starts triggering, you know, now you're a processor, and it triggers all sorts of different health department regulations in addition to, you know, you're not, you don't fall into the agricultural business license exemptions or business tax exemptions. So, like, again, usually, it's, it's not until the fish are on deck and being processed or somehow out and exposed to the, to the environment that the birds start coming in. If they're just pulling the fish out of the hole, wrapping it, selling it, generally, it's just no more than the regular bird population just hanging out.
The other thing was that, from a tourist attraction standpoint, it's somewhat, and I hate to use the word "of a novelty," but it's very exciting when people come down and see that process going on, and so, the more we're aware and the more the public's aware, I was thinking of the Chamber app that will be up as well as Fishline, but the Chamber app might be in contact with them to make sure that there's good information. I know there'll be a connection to Fishline, but also good information... I know there'll be a connection to Fishline, but also good information there, letting people know where they might be able to go to do that, so to make those purchases. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, even at the harbor advisory board, a mention was made of, you know, maybe a flag, a standard flag that everybody flies, that they can hoist up. You know, all boats have somewhere to hoist some sort of a flag up and putting a standard flag up that if you know, whether it's on the City of Morro Bay's website or Chamber or Visitor Center, and you see that flag, oh, off-the-boat fish sales. Then you're walking down the embarking area and you see it, boom, you make the connection and away you go.
Great. Christine, questions? No, I don't think I have any questions either. I'll reserve my comments. So with that, I'll open up public comment. For anybody that'd like to speak to this item, public comment is open. Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to council. Christine?
Okay, great. I think it's terrific to have had a chance to see a policy a year later, so I appreciate the opportunity for the harbor board to review it and for us to review it, too. And I also fully support of moving forward, continuing it, and it looks like it'll be made policy in your procedures in harbor. I think it's just important to point out that this is one area where we, as the government, can set policy that encourages business and bringing people here. And I think it's, if we're able to allow for the opportunity, then I look forward to the fishermen themselves bumping up their marketing. I did think that the flag mentioned in the harbor advisory board minutes was an excellent idea, simple and easy. I also think we want to remember that high-tech's great, and many of us are very comfortable with it, but, you know, a low-tech, really funky-looking chalkboard that people handwrite what's there, it wouldn't cost much, and it would be really interesting as well. So I think we want to remember to balance everybody's need and desire to be on social media all the time. And then lastly, the Harbor Festival's coming up, so it might be a really natural time to promote this additional ability that the people have in Morro Bay to get up close and personal with our fish. So I don't know. I don't know if you're on that committee. I don't think you are, Eric. Are you volunteering on the harbor advisory board? I mean, on the, sorry.
No, not on the Harbor Festival. We are working with the commercial fishermen and helping them help with their setups of what they're doing down there at the Harbor Festival. So yeah, we are going to see the boats back down. While you may not be able to physically go walk on a commercial fish, be able to walk right up to it, talk to the captain, and so hopefully that connection will start getting made again as well.
Yeah, seems like a great way to promote it.
It's been missing the last few years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Looks pretty exciting. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. John? No? Okay.
So I'm in support.
Great. Thanks for the closing comments, Christine. In addition, as we're thinking about marketing and some of the questions we had there, I was thinking, you know, great, we've done all the work to put the policy in place, and it seems as though, and it doesn't seem as though, we do have a pretty active advisory board and commercial fishermen that are participating. So if any of the marketing tools that we just mentioned need to be folded into policy or, you know, there's things that have developed from this, I'm pretty confident we'll hear from our commercial fishermen, our advisory board, and, you know, next steps. But I think I'm real pleased to see the policy that's before us and just the process that we went through. I think it's a great step and looking forward to it. So I'm definitely in support of that and would take a, this is really just a motion to approve the off-the-boat commercial fish sales policy for public docks and piers as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a so moved by Christine, a second by John. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, motion carries 4-0. And that'll conclude item C2. We move on to new business. New business is the approval of absence of Councilmember Matt Makawetzki from attendance at a council meeting for a 90-day period. Recommendation, review staff recommendation and decide whether to grant the Councilmember Makawetzki's request for leave of absence. And let's start out this report. Is this Ms. Slaton?
Thank you very much, Mayor Irons.
Thank you.
At our August 25, 2015, meeting, Mayor Irons read a letter from Councilmember Makawetzki to grant him up to, requesting that he be granted up to a 90-day absence. This issue was agendized for discussion at tonight's meeting. Government Code Section 36513 provides, "If a council member is absent for a consecutive 60-day period, then the council member's seat is vacated." Council, however, council does have the ability to grant permission for that absence. So tonight, council needs to decide the impact of Councilmember Makawetzki's absence and determine whether or not to grant that 90-day absence. Additionally, council needs to discuss and determine if Councilmember Makawetzki's, if Councilmember Makawetzki should continue to receive compensation based on his provision of services in his official capacity. However, council may not relieve him of his duties. They don't have the authority to do that. Councilmember Makawetzki would have to resign, be recalled, continue his absence. So there's, that's how that one would go. City Attorney Panone has supplied two sets of motions as follows. The first one is pursuant to Government Code Section 36513, "I move to grant Councilmember Makawetzki's request for a 90-day absence from all council meetings commencing on September 22, 2015, or whatever date the council determines." Also with that motion would be, "I move to deny Councilmember Makawetzki's request for permission to be absent from council meetings." The second set is, "I move the council to direct the Administrative Services Director to continue pay for Councilmember Makawetzki's compensation per the council's policies and procedures, notwithstanding his 90-day absences from council meetings." Additionally, "I move the council to direct the Administrative Services Director to continue to pay Councilmember Makawetzki's compensation per the council's policies and procedures during his absences from council meetings until he vacates his office pursuant to Government Code Section 36513." Those were the two, this was sent in an email from our city attorney, and from the looks that I'm seeing, I'm assuming that no one but two of us know what this is about. So I guess I'll give this back to you, and maybe I could hand you this piece of paper, and you can take a look at it.
That's great. I appreciate it. That's okay, yeah. That's okay. I think we can wade through it. Thanks for the staff report. And with that, we can open up for any questions from council at this point to staff and then move on to public comment. Christine, you want to leave us off on some questions?
Sure, yeah. I had the advantage of asking the question, so I had a little extra time. It's okay. I appreciate the responses. Great. So my question is just about the compensation, because in the staff report, could you just clarify for us what we are, I guess I'm playing around with, you know, all the different options, and if we move somehow to deny the request to be absent, then there's likely no change in compensation? Because it would just basically be like, well, we've denied it, so we would wait for Councilmember Makawetzki to respond to our action. So if we go with 1B, then there's no compensation question? But I'll tell you my second part.
I'm not sure what no compensation question means. If you deny, if you deny the request for the absence, then Councilmember Makawetzki would continue to receive his compensation until that 60-day period happened where he didn't come to all the council meetings and his position would be vacated.
Okay. So the option that we may choose, as you laid out, is that we do grant, majority of us grant, the request for the 90-day absence. Then we have, do we then purely have to decide whether or not during that 90-day absence, if we so deem it, that the compensation is received?
I think it would be helpful for staff to have that determination made by the council so the staff isn't having to decide whether or not, what your policy means. Because there's some thought as to how to define services in the capacity of. And so we need to know whether the council thinks that that policy means you have to come to meetings for you to be able to fit that definition of services in capacity of, or take the approach that I think the law provides, which doesn't mean the other's illegal if you do the other one, but I think that the law, at least says to me, is if a person is seated in a council seat and they haven't vacated that seat, they are in capacity providing service because they're filling that seat.
Great. No, that clarifies it for me, based on the staff report. Okay, great. Those were my questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christine. John, Noah, any questions?
So maybe it's muddier now for me, and, but then again, I'm dealing with the law. And I didn't say a lawyer, see? Thank you, Mr. Panone. So clarification for me. On background discussion and agenda item D1, the first sentence, Government Code 36513 provides, "If a council member is absent from all regular council meetings scheduled within a consecutive 60-day period, then the council member's seat is considered vacated." I'm taking that as a simple explanation of what the term "vacated seat" means.
Pursuant to that code section, right.
Correct, okay. And then I'm looking further down, the very last sentence, "Compensation for services rendered by the mayor and council member in an official capacity shall be provided in accordance with state law and MBMC." If the council decides the requested absence from council meetings results in a council member, Makawetzki, no longer providing services in an official capacity, then no compensation would be provided. And so those appear to me to be contiguous, and this is not any judgment of desire to pay or not to pay, but I'm trying to understand and interpret policy, code, law, et cetera.
The policy, the policy quote ends at the bottom of page 1.
Right.
At the top of page 2 isn't part of the policy.
Correct.
That's stating what could happen if you make that determination.
Yes. And so the determination then is a staff determination, because it was written by staff. In other words, first paragraph, page, whatever page it is, the backside of the report. "If council decides requested absence from council meetings results in Councilmember Makawetzki no longer providing services in an official capacity, then no compensation would be provided." Who's saying that and based on what?
The council deciding to grant the, it's the city, what this was trying to communicate is, it's up to you to decide whether or not absence from the council meetings falls outside of Councilman Matt Kueske providing official capacity services. So it's your decision. It's you interpreting that policy.
Thank you.
Noah?
Yes, thank you. So in the case that we support him continuing to receive compensation, does Councilmember Makawetzki have the discretion to decline that within his prerogative? Would he be able to say, "I do not want to receive this check," and revert back to the city? Or another question would be, could he decide to take those funds and donate it to an organization that he felt was, deserved those funds?
He definitely could donate the, what he receives to some other nonprofit. If he receives the compensation, he certainly could write the check back to the city, but he'd still have to receive it as income and take it as taxable income and then do whatever he wants with it.
So he wouldn't have the discretion, though, to suspend those payments? Those would keep coming, then he would have to handle that, how it's in his court?
He could either pay it back to the city or pay it to some other nonprofit.
Okay.
And it would show up on his tax records as income.
Okay, thank you. One last question, it's more for us. I think this is probably an appropriate time to also talk about if we do grant the leave or even if we don't, we need to discuss Matt's other representative duties, the Morro Bay National Estuary Program, harbor advisory board, et cetera. So we should make room for that conversation after public comment as well.
Okay, great. And just for public information, so what is the compensation for council member? Pardon me? So what is the monthly compensation for a council member? Oh, okay. Maybe someone on council, is it? I know it's...
$500.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Just wanted to do that for public information, and so that would be for 90 days is what the request is. Okay. Those are the only questions I have. I'll open it for public comment. Anybody that'd like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name, and we'd love to hear you. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And with that, I think, Noah, you start off with, I think it might be worthwhile to just, you opened up some questions that we may have to, some further discussion about some of the responsibilities, which are good ones. I think it'd probably be appropriate just to go ahead and work through what we have before us in the staff report and then go from there. I'll just, I'll start off. You know, I'm in support of Matt Makawetzki, Councilmember Makawetzki's request for 90-day leave of absence. I would also note that during the recent mayor's meeting, I was, Mayor Higginbotham approached me and inquired about Councilmember Makawetzki, and she offered that Pismo Beach went through a similar situation where a council member shortly after taking office fell into a health situation and requested leave of absence. They went through the same hearing or proceeds that we're going through now. They granted him the leave of absence. He came back and served the rest of his term, and it was, you know, it was a good story. So I think it was, it's also great to hear from a neighboring city, especially a neighboring city, not just some other city out and, not that it should make any difference, but a neighboring city reach out to us and explain something like that. So that, I certainly do appreciate that from our neighboring mayor to reach out, and I would be in support of a 90-day grant of absence. And as far as the compensation goes, I, it was an interesting topic as we, you know, I guess that wasn't quite, I wasn't really expecting that to be part of the topic, but considering, I would also be in support of granting the compensation for 90 days. I think to a degree, what, as an elected, you know, Matt worked to get elected. That doesn't, that doesn't shortfall his request for leave of absence. And so for that, I would be in support of the compensation. And, you know, if he so chooses to do something, as Councilmember Smuckler decided, that's his prerogative, but those are my positions on the two items. So welcome any further discussion. And up to my left, Christine?
Okay, thank you very much. Certainly, it's really lonely down here at this end of the table, so it's feeling a little chill. But as I was thinking about the process and what we are being asked to decide, for me, it just came down to that Matt Makawetzki was duly elected by a sizable majority of the voters in Morro Bay to a four-year term. So that four-year term began in 2014 and ends in 2018. So if you add up all the months in a four-year term, and we're talking about 90 days or three months out of that large chunk of time that he's just begun to serve, then I feel that it's the right decision to agree to his leave of absence. And of course, giving him that time he needs to fully recover and come back and serve more actively. I also would just state that in his letter, you notice that he closed with the fact that if he was unable to return, that he was... if he was unable to return, that he would make that decision and let us know. So I have faith that Mr. Makawetzki is an honorable person who will assess his situation at the end of 90 days and make a decision about returning to the council. So I think that I feel comfortable, again, he's already sort of addressed that issue of what would happen after 90 days if it wasn't, his condition wasn't allowing him to serve. And I think that that's a responsible kind of thought on his part, considering what he's asking. So therefore, I agree with Mayor Irons, I'm comfortable with the leave. I'm also comfortable with the compensation. I didn't expect the question either. I doubt Mr. Makawetzki expected the question probably, but it's a right question. So I appreciate staff pointing it out that it needed, that a decision needed to be made. And I do agree where the conversation was heading with Noah's suggestion that maybe we, Matt can decide how much he's actually doing and not doing and decide on his compensation in that way in these 90 days. I do think, given that he is expecting to return, I would have a feeling that if it were one of us, we probably would keep our finger on the pulse as much as we could. And I would say, you know, even as you mentioned, you know, he doesn't spend a lot of time in the daylight, but I'm sure this is, he could listen, you know, I'm sure he's listening now, and I'm sure that, you know, something like listening to our meetings at least, you know, keeping up with them that way would be something that if he's doing, and I would anticipate he is, because a lot of our issues are reoccurring issues, so it's not one time we're done, then, you know, he would then, in my mind, be continuing to participate and keep up with the issues we're discussing, knowing that he'd have to step right back in to the middle of them. So I would be comfortable with that. As far as his advisory boards, I was wondering, and I don't recall how often the Harbor Advisory Board meets, if it's monthly or every other month? And I guess that I would ask if we know, I know Noah, you used to serve on the National Estuary Program, wondering how often those meetings are held? If it's monthly, Noah, or, anyway, those are my questions, so we can roundabout to those others. Okay, thank you.
John?
Thank you. I too would be in support of the request for a 90-day leave of absence for Councilmember Makawetzki. What I'm grappling with really is language. And once again, a policy that presents a significant amount of gray, in my opinion, or gray zone consideration. And I don't believe it's cut and dried. However, I do believe that when you're employed by the city, any other employee would be inuring vacation time or PTO, paid time off. And council members do not, in my recollection, have any provision in the policy that talks about that. And the reason that's there is because there are times when people are going to be away for significant amounts of time and compensation does continue. Two, I appreciate what Councilmember Johnson stated, and that is that although he may not be visually reading in detail the numerous documents we have the privilege of reading these days, he certainly is listening and paying attention and keeping up, I believe, as much as possible. And given that, I do not believe this is a, what I would call a complete separation from service and fits enough within the gray zone to continue to allow for compensation. And so I could support that or would support that based upon those two caveats. I think that lends itself also to maybe a relook at the policy, which we just did, but, and some consideration for language that might be, maybe Mr. Penone has from other communities that might be clearer with regard to that. I don't know if that could be tightened in the future. And the last thing I would say is what effective date are we looking at? His letter is dated 8/22/15. And I do believe we should come up with a time as to when this would be effective because the clock needs to be ticking according to, I believe, a council-appointed timeline. And so I would throw out that we, or personally, I believe that the last meeting actively attended or served could be an appropriate time established. And/or the consideration of the date of the letter could be an appropriate time as for the establishment of that consideration. So I would be inclined to consider the date that he last attended a meeting.
Noah?
Okay, thank you. And I'd agree with the comments before. I think the existing policy is, really sets up a case-by-case analysis, which is not preferred, but in some cases, you know, particularly here with Mr. Makawetzki, this is serious, this is something that he doesn't have any control over, and it definitely warrants the leave to be granted. And I had a chance to talk with him today, he doesn't want to receive the compensation. But I think, I agree with all of you, that it's almost impossible to separate yourself from the job and duties of the council. He is monitoring our activities, he's reading email as possible, he's still receiving input and contact from the community as he's out and doing his daily routine and so forth as much as he can. So those duties are still there, and obviously, he was very active before this. So looking at it from a workers' comp type situation, he would certainly be due the continued compensation. So I agree with that. I think the other part of this that's really concerning is hopefully he does come back, not only for his health, but the will of the voters is that Mr. Makawetzki sits in that chair, and if that doesn't happen, that would revert back to us in an appointment role, which is very messy and something to be avoided as much as possible. So we'll be pulling for him a bunch of different angles on this. And as far as the different additional committees and duties that he serves on chairs, he is the National Estuary Program representative, I'm the alternate. So I've already sat in for him and will continue to do that, no problem. I didn't get a chance to look at his other roles besides the Harbor Advisory Board, so we should definitely appoint a representative to fill in there because that connection's important. And I think the others, like with the Estuary Program, will likely just revert back to the alternate, which we've already appointed in those cases. So by double-checking that, that should address that challenge.
Okay, thanks. I have one quick question as I look at the motions here, and just want to get some clarity, I think John was asking as well. So as I understand it, council is in agreement to the proposed motion that you laid out, Mr. Penone, and that was motion 1A. The other two motions have to do with compensation. And 2A was basically moving to direct administrative services director to continue compensation, notwithstanding his 90-day absence from council meetings. And the other one was during his absence until he vacates or pursuant to government code. I don't even understand why we'd have to have that one, because if he's vacated, it doesn't, it seems like we can just, if we're in support of both of these, we could make a motion, which was, I'm just going to say 1A without reading the whole thing, and 2A, and that would cover everything.
I agree, they were alternates.
Okay, okay.
2B went with 1B.
Okay, gotcha, all right. Just wanted, thanks for the clarity. Maybe everybody else is already on that, but, okay, thanks. So at this time, I would move, make a motion pursuant to government code section 36513. I move to grant Councilmember Makawetzki's request for a 90-day absence from all council meetings commencing on September 22, 2015, period. And I'll just do one motion at a time at this point, so, and I need a second for that.
Yeah, I'll second for discussion on the date.
Second for Christine. And so motion by Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Johnson, discussion, discussion on date?
I think we, I heard there was some interest in discussing date.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess for me, I'll just kick it off, September 22, I guess, I'll ask staff to remind us why September 22 was selected.
Since I stuck it in there, I'll respond. Because it's the next meeting after tonight. That's why.
The request, the request is made today?
You're hearing it today.
This is the request, and formally, the 90-day starts from tonight's meeting.
From when you want, but it seemed to me it would start from the next meeting.
That he's not attending. No, I understand that. And also too, there's nothing that we could have done to hear this item sooner, right? I mean, it had to be agendized the way it was, so, okay. So I'm kind of curious about other comments on the date, but I understand the rationale behind it seems reasonable.
Any further discussion?
Just with regard to the date, the conflict, the conflicting dates between the letter 8/22/15, the last meeting, which was closed session before last, I believe, and the 22nd, I...
The only, the only meetings we need to be concerned about are regular meetings, not special meetings. So your council, closed sessions are special meetings. The last regular meeting that Councilman Gueske appeared at was the August 25th.
No.
I'm sorry.
No, I don't believe so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't believe so.
The 11th?
Yes.
August 11th.
That's my, so I, my concern is the date.
Noah?
Good, I think it's a good concern, but I have heard Mr. Makawetzki express a commitment to let us know as soon as possible if this turns into a situation that he feels and realizes he's not going to recover from. My thought would be, let's do everything we can to avoid him, to help and make sure that he can come back and avoid an appointment-type scenario. I think we have been a very highly functioning council that can work through this, and if we weren't, I would be more concerned that this would be debilitating for us and the city's functions. But I'm confident that we can also, as a four-member body, do the work and not be hung on too many decisions. And my thought would be, let's do everything we can to avoid an appointment scenario if Mr. Makawetzki cannot come back. So the date that staff suggested makes sense to me.
Any further discussion, John?
I'm still, I appreciate that very much, and I do, with all candor, this has nothing to do with the individual, and I want to make that very clear, it has to do with the process should it occur again. And not wanting to be terribly legalistic because we do have some leeway with regard to this, if indeed this pretends to contribute to some healing that may have already occurred and allows for a shortening of the possibility of a return time and not prolonging that, which I think I heard you say. In essence, because, because the process of healing has been occurring, then I, it's not, it's not a point of contention that I'm hung up on and have a major problem with. It's just, if it happens again, if there's some way to clarify the language, that would be helpful.
Christine?
Yeah, I understand the discussion, I understand the reason for it. I guess what I'm going back to is that we, as a body, had to have this meeting to even have the conversation. So for us to go backward and like retroactively start the date would feel a little uncomfortable to me because we couldn't have gotten it any sooner on the agenda than today. And there are a certain number of absences that are allowed for us to miss, you know, not certainly to do something really fun like go to Disneyland, but, you know, clearly that is built into the system in case we do have an emergency, health or otherwise. So I understand the rationale as it was presented by Mr. Penone for the 22nd. And I think, you know, we probably need to pick a date and kind of be stuck, and stick with that, and that one feels comfortable to me, simply because the process of us discussing it couldn't have happened any sooner and we had to wait until today. So it was the letter we just received two weeks ago, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's where I am.
Okay, thanks. I just have one more question from Mr. Penone. Considering other actions that we may take as a council, where we approve or ratify something the night of, perhaps even the next day, as mayor or staff, they may actually sign the document. So was there any thought, if there's debate over having the date September 22nd, was there any question about having the date September 9th following this meeting? Can you elaborate?
I talked to no one about filling in that date. I just filled in the date.
Okay.
Because that, okay.
Yeah, yes.
Because I knew ultimately it was your decision.
That would be, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's important that we agree on the date.
Yeah, and...
I can see where that would make a lot of sense, that option to go with tomorrow.
Sure, absolutely. With that, I would, since there seems to be consensus there, I'd withdraw my motion. I have a second to withdraw?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'd restate the motion. I move to grant Councilmember Makawetzki's request for a 90-day absence from all council meetings commencing on September 9th, period. We have a second by Christine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries 4-0. Thank you. And then, so the next motion would be, I move the council direct, administrative services director to continue pay Councilmember Makawetzki's compensation per council policies and procedures, notwithstanding his 90-day absence from council meetings.
Point of clarification?
You want a second, and then discussion for clarification or just clarification?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by mayor and second by Mr. Heading. Discussion?
Does that include benefits? Compensation, you're talking about full compensation package, good, because I want to make sure that that's good. Thank you.
Cool, thanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries 4-0. Great. And then finally, board appointments. You know, I think we could just refer to alternates on there, and like, we can take a look at who the alternates are for his board and just basically send out an email that acknowledges what the alternates' responsibilities are. And I imagine if there's any conflicting dates with that, then, you know, we can just make the appropriate changes. Is there agreement with that? Okay, all right, cool.
We just, the Harbor Advisory Board is the only one that doesn't have a natural alternate. That's just the one I'm ever just thought of right now. So I don't know if we want to have someone cover those meetings, or, and then again, I'm sorry that I should know the schedule if they're every month. I feel like they're maybe not.
First Thursday of every month, with the exception of January and July, for the holidays.
Okay.
Okay?
Right, so did we want to have someone attend those or pay attention?
We have, we have an alternate to...
No, no, we don't, that's what I'm saying. The only one that's uncovered is the Harbor Advisory Board. You just, you just get one, all of us get one liaison to a board. So there won't be any, he won't be paying attention to that. I don't know if he attends or not, it's not a requirement.
Okay, got it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, I'm sure.
So we're looking at liaison assignments versus the advisory board assignments. I am sorry, I misunderstood you.
That's okay.
And certainly, I think we can probably facilitate that amongst us. Eric, I don't necessarily, you know, if we want to designate someone at this time, I'm sure everybody's chomping at the bit to take on, you know, another one, but Eric, you have any comments?
You want me to choose?
No, I think, I think we could probably do that and get through this. You know, unless there's any comments, you know, or any inclination to... You know, unless there's any comments, you know, or any inclination to, to volunteer. You know, if there's no inclination for that, seeing none.
Well, Christine, well, I was just going to comment on your question. Christine said unnatural. Be me, though I would, I do have an interest in learning more about it.
Okay. Okay.
Did I say unnatural? Did I?
Assumed anybody that would do it would be unnatural, so.
Oh, I'm just glad, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I think someone, I think that it is nice to have that connection back to council. So, I think it would be great and I appreciate John stepping up.
Yep, appreciate it, thanks. All right, with that.
Mr. Mayor, technicality, we'll put something on the consent agenda last, next time to make that appointment since it really wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, that sounds great, thanks, appreciate that. And now we'll move on to item D2, excuse me, D1. Item D1 is, we've already done that, pardon me, item D2, consideration of an ordinance regulating expanded polystyrene food containers and products. Recommendation is discussed and direct staff accordingly. Mr. Leavick?
Thank you. First, I want to preface this and confess to, I am not an expert in expanded polystyrene food containers or products. But I think I'll learn a lot more by the time we get done with this process. I do have a brief PowerPoint that's coming up on the screen that'll kind of walk us through the staff report and the memo that was prepared by our city attorney. What we're looking for tonight is to review the memo from our city attorney's office and provide additional or direction to staff on how to proceed with this proposed item. Background. This was agendized based on public comment at the January, or excuse me, June 23rd city council meeting. Little bit more background, I don't know how many people in the community remember this, but back in 2008, the city council passed resolution 10-08 that prohibited city funds to purchase styrofoam products for city operational uses. Prohibits the use of styrofoam products at city-sponsored events and discourages the use of styrofoam products at private events. Styrofoam is a brand name, by the way. I think we're talking about any expanded polystyrene product. I knew I should have been a chemical engineer. The question that we're asking tonight is, should this limitation extend to the community as a large as an ordinance banning these expanded polystyrene products or styrofoam? Next slide. What is expanded polystyrene and why do cities want to ban it? Should say cities and communities at large, counties, states, countries. EPS is a lightweight and inexpensive material. It's about 95% air. Great insulating properties. Very cheap to manufacture and it's been a popular choice for many businesses. Why do, what's the problem with it? There's potential health risks with the chemicals in and used to make this EPS and it is harmful to the environment. And if it, anybody's interested, I, speaking of social media we were talking about earlier, there was a, it showed up in my Facebook feed, a video narrated by Jeff Bridges on the Coalition Against Plastics or some such thing. Very moving video, so if you have three minutes, watch that. And it talks more about the prevalence of plastics in the environment and problems with them and what we can do to reduce the amount. And it's inordinate amount of oil that is used to manufacture water bottles. The example he gave, it's enough for fuel a million cars in the manufacture of water bottles. Anyway, I digress. Good thing Dave's not here to see that. He's watching, yes, I know, I'll pay for it later. As part of this memo, we looked at some work that the City of San Luis Obispo had done. They reviewed EPS bans in 11 agencies. And we've also included in this memo and presentation what the City of San Luis Obispo did. Next slide. Most cities recognize that the EPS is lightweight material. They can be blown out of waste receptacles into storm drains and waterways. It breaks down into small pieces which allow it easily spread through the aquatic environment, sometimes mistaken as food by fish and wildlife. It's difficult to, inexpensive to clean up. And I think we all know that. When we get something shipped to us, getting rid of either the peanuts or the packaging and you go to break it up and you have, you know, millions of little tiny pieces of styrofoam that are impossible to all pick up. And it's not economically feasible to recycle. Next slide, here's a, more, more words on a page that are also included in the, in the memo. Some agencies have included, you know, this language. Prohibiting use of EPS food and drink containers provided by food providers. Giving specific definition. Have, usually have an undue hardship clause where alternatives are either too expensive or the container needs cannot be met by alternatives. Exemption for packaging of uncooked food products such as raw feet, fish and meat. An exclusion for foods prepared and packaged outside of cities or other agencies but sold in the city limits. Inclusion of an emergency clause for public health and safety or medical necessity. I'm not sure what that would be, but like I said, I'm going to become more of an expert, I'm sure, of what these things mean. And an implementation timeframe after adopted, and it ranges from 30 days to a year. Additional things that's, agencies have done. Prohibiting basically all non-recyclable containers in favor of compostable or biodegradable containers. The addition of other products made from EPS, including coolers, pool toys, packing peanuts for shipping. So, including that into the mix of what would be forbidden. An in lieu fine program where proof of purchase of acceptable products is accepted instead of a fine for the first offense. So, if somebody brings in their receipt from wherever you buy the cardboard containers and said, see, I, I meant to do this and I really did and here's my receipt. That's, has been accepted instead of fines. Capitola in Santa Cruz expanded their initial ordinance, including, to include a wider range, including the retail sale of polystyrene products. Carpentaria included that each food provider signed a signed certification that they are aware of the ordinance and, and will comply with it. And it was done at the beginning of each year. Next slide has what the City of San Luis Obispo did. Prohibiting the use of EPS for prepared food. Required food providers to use biodegradable, compostable and recyclable food containers. Prohibit vendors and event promoters from selling otherwise providing EPS which is not solely encased in a more durable product. Exemption process that the city manager determines the exemptions. Violations would be processed through the administrative site program. But they had an option, the in lieu, like the, was suggested on the previous page. If they show evidence that they had purchased those containers, they were, got their fine waived. And the violation provision at various rates depending on the size of the event and what was violated. Next slide. There are other considerations in adopting ordinance that impacts the businesses, the cost to implement. Both implement from a code perspective on the city's part and private industry to make that transition to something other than the EPS containers. What do we expect from this ordinance? What is our expected outcome? How are we going to measure success? Agencies found it's difficult to classify litter. Difficult, I think, reading the report meant it's expensive to send people out to pick up litter and to count what the different products is. But we can see some examples of what other cities have found is, Santa Cruz in their last beach cleanup saw a 50% reduction in EPS at that cleanup. And the City of San Francisco has seen a 36% reduction in EPS litter. This graphic is from the, the memo and I think it's a good way to view the various levels of types of ordinance where you range from just food and drink containers to almost everything down at type 4. And then the last slide looks at some questions that we're looking to, for the council to help us answer. Should we pursue an ordinance regulating the use of EPS? Include food containers? Include all non-recyclable, non-compostable food containers? Include non-recyclable, non-compostable, non-reusable food service ware? Cups, straws, lids, et cetera? Include things like the coolers and packing peanuts? Include an in lieu of fine program? And seek stakeholder input with the suggestion of a written survey, but there may be more ways to do that stakeholder input. That concludes my report and I'll try to answer more questions about EPS.
Thanks, Rob. I thought you were going to wear your chemical engineering hat to, to the meeting tonight. But at any rate, we'll open it up for council questions and then public comment. So, any questions from council to my right? Noah?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Leavick. I'd like to just start with a question about enforcement. And do you anticipate this would be mostly complaint-driven enforcement?
I think it would be both, a mix of both complaint-driven and public education where during the initial stages, there might be a higher level of engagement with the businesses and giving them alternatives than go down to complaint-driven. We might have an annual, sort of, like one of the cities, I think Carpenteria, had self-certification of the businesses to ensure that, I think it was just messaging that, you remember we did this a year ago? Well, it's, it's time to remind ourselves why we did this, so I would envision something like that.
My other question has to do with the IWMA and.
Thank you. My other question has to do with the Integrated Waste Management Authority and just curious to know why in the case of the plastic bag ban, we saw some leadership from the IWMA. And here in another example of, of a material that does cause very significant impacts to public health and also the environments, we're seeing the IWMA kind of punt the, what I consider to be their role in this sort of a discussion. So, I think that's something we should, we should ask and perhaps we should take some action to send a letter and communicate to the IWMA our expectation that they will step up.
Great comments. John, questions?
Follow-up comment, okay, to Mr. Smuckler's question. Being the liaison to the board or would you rather wait till later, discussion? I'm going to be happy to do that.
You want to just keep it different questions right now, thanks?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, yeah. What would you envision the process be for implementation and rollout to the businesses? And I think the number one complaint you might hear would be cost of alternatives. Because polystyrene is very inexpensive comparatively. And so, my sense is that businesses will, will complain about alternatives being costly. So, in terms of outreach, how are we, have we thought about what that process will be in terms of education and implementation if it does pass?
The implementation, I think, starts with the public education even before we get to the ordinance. And getting this, starting right now, this public education as to why the community has chosen, if they, if we so choose to do this, why we have chosen to do it. Working with perhaps our chamber, Downtown Merchants Association and the Embarcadero Merchants and maybe with the assistance of our Harvard Department on the leaseholders to get that information out. The, we have in the memo a review of some of the costs of, for example, a EPS plate is a little over 5.6 cents or 56 one thousandths of a dollar. I think I'll stick with cents. 5.6 cents where if you look at compostable, compostable plastic, it's 15 cents, so it's three times as much. But we're still talking about a relatively small number to begin with. I'll refrain from using my own personal opinion about how much I would pay for something like this, but it is a very small number. And then molded natural fibers are a penny more than what the EPS is. So, it's, I think education starts with looking at what the true costs are and not just saying, it's going to put me out of business because the costs are higher, but looking at what the, the true costs are. And I used to live on the other side of the river from Portland, Oregon. They banned polystyrene coffee cups, I think in 92. I think there's probably more coffee shops in Portland now than there was in 92 when everybody was using polystyrene. But they, they seem to adapt and survive. That sounds a little flippant, but I, I think it's a relatively small number as far as the costs go. But I think the education component and making sure that everybody knows what the relative increase in costs could result in. And I'm assuming that some of those costs will be borne by the customer, if not all of them. And we as a community should embrace that too, if we're going to pass, pass an ordinance that would have that. That was a little long-winded, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Are we aware of any Cal Poly studies that have been done recently or in the last couple of years on polystyrene and our wonderful bay?
No, I'm not aware of any.
Thank you.
Christine?
Just a really basic question. So, Mr. Leavick, you've received this in your desk because you're Public Works and it falls under Public Works. Is that right?
Public Works manages the Solid Waste Program. Seems like a solid wastish kind of thing, so it's Public Works.
Okay, so it'll be coming, so any direction given tonight, you'll be the lead and that'll be your department taking the lead, yet working with partners you have already identified? be your department taking the lead, yet working with partners you have already identified?
Yes. Yes, we'll work in the community, will be probably working with our deputy city manager in assisting on the public outreach. I'm sure there'll be a Facebook post or two about this.
Okay, great. No, those are all my questions. Everything was really well laid out in terms of what we need to do in the staff report, so thanks.
I'm going to, I'm going to forego any questions. Most of my questions were asked at this point, so I'm just going to go right into public comment for anybody who'd like to speak to this item. Public comment is open, please come forward.
I agree with all of the good reasons that there are to ban this product, and I think it's a great message for the city of Morro Bay to publish that we are concerned about our place in the environment. The only concern I have is packaging of raw meat and fish, and I would be delighted to discover that there is an alternative to polystyrene that will provide a helpful packaging for raw meat and fish. Thank you.
Thank you, Red.
I'm Rosalie Valvo, Morro Bay resident. I want to thank you for considering a ban, a ban on expanded polystyrene in Morro Bay. I want to thank the city of Morro, San Luis Obispo for providing such an excellent model. And I'd like to thank Mr. Leibig for such a good preface, explanation. We all know how bad it is for the environment and how it can kill wildlife, who might be attracted to a little bit of food and something that somebody tossed, and then they're poisoned. And it doesn't go away, it just stays forever. I wish we could put 100% ban on it, but let's do what we can do. And let's not let anything get in the way. The main app is opposition to this, other than perhaps from the suppliers of EPS, will be based, excuse me, on the cost of materials. Of course, the long-term cost, if we don't do anything, is far worse than the short-term costs. But let's work with those businesses that are struggling to stay ahead. I would propose a consortium, perhaps even orchestrated by the city, where local businesses group together to buy in bulk. Not being a businessperson myself, I don't know all the ins and outs of this approach, but I did notice a mention of it among some of the businesses in the Slow report. Perhaps that could work here. The more businesses that convert over, the better, and we want our businesses to be happy. So please, a ban on styrofoam as far as we can go. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. Anybody else for a public comment?
Good evening, members of the board and staff. My name is Rick Deschler, Morro Bay resident. I support a ban on polystyrene products. Looking at your questions, I would say yes, yes, yes to the first three, dealing with food containers and besides the EPS containers, the, the polystyrene containers are number three. But I would give flexibility and say possibly a no for the utensils, cup lids, and straws. Maybe in a few years, that could be added in, but I think at this time, that might be pushing it a little too far. I believe San Luis also does not include that in their process. I definitely would give multiple yeses on the next one, the retail sales of EPS products. That would be coolers, packing peanuts, et cetera. On the next question that deals with the undue hardship, 15% is far too low. If you do have an undue hardship clause, I would put that at 50% at, as a minimum. And if you want to do an in lieu, fine, that's, you know, that's up to you guys. I know that my partner and I, when we dine out in Morro Bay or anywhere, if the restaurants are using polystyrene products, we don't go in. You know, we, we see what they, they have, and, and we pass that restaurant by. There's a lot of restaurants out there that already have converted, and they get our business. I think this ban would put all of the restaurant businesses or the other types of businesses all on an equal footing. A lot of people have taken the step in advance, and they've been very successful, you know, as a business, and I don't believe that this is really an undue hardship for any of the, their competing businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. HGP, can we get some help on the overhead, please?
It went on earlier.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Irons and city council members. I am Janine Rans, and I come to speak tonight in favor of your counsel addressing the problem of polystyrene, referred later as EPS or expanded polystyrene, here in Morro Bay. As a frequent beach visitor from my home in San Luis and have helped at beach cleanups, I am frustrated with unrecyclable waste and litter that EPS, from to-go containers, packing peanuts, cooler chests, toys, and other forms of foam plastic, end up in our parks, streets, estuaries, storm drains, and eventually the Pacific Ocean. EPS has its sources in your restaurants, and of course, all retail stores that sell it. We do recognize that EPS is brought in from the outside, and we hope that soon will be changed, first countywide and then the state. I noted from the excellent report that Rob Leibig and the city attorney created that in time for this, for this meeting tonight, that Morro Bay did have this restriction in, in 2008 against styrofoam, and it hasn't been observed. So a conversation today with Bill Worrell of the IWMA, he has affirmed that once five cities in the county have the ban in place, they will, the IWMA will take that on as their agenda item, and they will take care of the rest of the county, the unincorporated cities. So I am part of a grassroots organization in the county called Slow Foam Free that formed in 2014 to initiate cities to address the problem of polystyrene. We started and successfully had San Luis Obispo pass this ordinance. We've studied the evidence it takes for a city to create the ordinance for the use and sale of polystyrene. So we are organizing right now to go city by city for the five major cities to get this ordinance in place by 2016. We have strong local support from, and everybody knows that I'm here speaking tonight, from Surf Riders Foundation, Sierra Club Santa Lucia Chapter, Clean Oceans Competition, and the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, who has funded our printing and our meetings. We really don't need more facts, figures, and research to prove that this stuff is bad for our environment and our health, our waterways and landfill issues. The manufacturing industry pulled a nasty one back in the mid-1980s and introduced polystyrene as a food-safe product. Americans believed and embraced this innovative container with open arms so much that even our schools got rid of the plastic and tin washable trays to replace with polystyrene trays and dishes.
If you can wrap it up quickly.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the different highlight, major issues are the toxins to people, toxins to marine and wildlife, and disposal of the EPS. And then this one I want to highlight, that our own Cold Canyon landfill is just about maxed out and is currently requesting approval to expand acreage, volume, and the daily rate of incoming trash from 1,200 to 1,650 tons per day of trash to the landfill. So polystyrene use needs to be stopped as a choice by every person, restaurant, business, schools, and then even medical offices. With the help of this ordinance and education, it is an important step in the right direction. Today's city council vote on this ordinance will end our addiction to EPS and take a progressive position on the problems that will affect our children and grandchildren for decades to come. I urge you to adopt San Luis Obispo's city ordinance to regulate the use and sale of expanded polystyrene.
Judy, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. Three minutes has gone on, I was asking you to, please.
And as a comment to the cost alternatives, that businesses should be paying double or more than other businesses.
Thank you. Thanks, Judy. I'm going to have to ask you to conclude. Thank you.
And I mentioned that Trader Joe's and Whole Foods and a couple of others have already changed out to alternative dishes.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Pardon me for a minute, there's a couple of things, if the council will so entertain me, there's a couple of comments I just, I need to ask questions on. Is council open for that? There's, there's a 50% ban. Mr. Deschler, you're saying you were recommending the 50% versus 15. How do you come up with that? You were making the recommendation, but it'd be helpful for council to understand why you would, why you would urge us to do 50% on that versus 15. If you can come to the mic. Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to hear.
I believe somewhere in the report, it was talking about a recommendation or about how much to consider a hardship. And it said 15%, 15% often used as threshold for determining an undue economic hardship. Please note, such an exemption could swallow the ban because it is not unusual for alternatives to cost 15%. It's on page six.
I've got that, yeah.
And so I thought that was far, you know, I agreed with that statement, it's far too low, it would make the ban useless.
And you suggested 50, so I was trying to get some, some idea of why 50, why not 35?
It, it needs to be high enough so that really is a hardship, and I figured a 50% increase in costs might be an undue hardship. But really, I don't think it's, it should be in there at all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for entertaining that question. And with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Christine, you want to start off with discussion?
Yeah, so thanks for all your public comment, everyone, and great staff report, Rob, and thanks for those of you who spoke earlier. We had quite a bit of comment and folks who emailed. So my only disappointment is the lack of leadership, really, on a countywide level. Hate to say it, because we've gone through it already. It was a lot more painful, I think, with the plastic bag ban, which really touched just about every single person, but we overcame it and think a united front countywide makes a large statement. So certainly, I'd be interested in, in hearing a little bit from Mr. Heding, who's currently our representative there, and, and maybe if things, you know, if we're agreement tonight, then, you know, maybe two cities already passing it in letters from each city encouraging IWMA to reconsider if it was indeed a, something he did say, that five city, his five-city suggestion. So just a little, I feel like any county that has a plastic bag ban would also perhaps lend itself to something like, like this, kind of an EPS ban, too, but we'd like to talk to you about that on council. I am very concerned that we haven't heard anyone say they don't like the ban yet, and I think that's because we haven't, we're just entering in the public education phase, as Mr. Leibig said. And tonight really is the kickoff for that phase, people catching wind of it. So I certainly will encourage us to strongly pull together our staff resources, Harvard Department for the Leaseholders, Public Works, the Chamber, the Merchants Association. I also think using our deputy city manager with his public information skills to create a campaign of some sort, that would be something that would be noticed by all restaurateurs, because what we're asking is, we've got a lot of restaurants, we, that means we have a lot of business owners who are really very busy people, and I wouldn't want them to be shocked by something at the end of the process, but would want to get them involved in the beginning of the process. So for me, when we're looking at the last, the questions for council direction, see stakeholder input through a written survey, I would put that at the top, you know, as a priority number one, because we definitely have city, we have quite a bit of community support, but we do need to engage the people who are actually still using it. And I think we may find a lot of people in the business community would have a lot of good reasons to share with their peers of why they got rid of it. And I think it's a marketing tool for all of us, that we can market, you know, I think this, maybe Foam Free MB or something like this. So I think it's well worth making a campaign, just as we're doing with our upcoming code enforcement. So we just don't want to surprise anyone with this. The other thing I would just comment on is, we don't want to bite off too much at once, so certainly, if I jump right into the council direction block on the last page of the staff report, I would say yes to the, the ordinance for regulating the use of EPS, yes to include EPS food containers. I want to have a little conversation about including all non-recyclable, non-compostable, non-reusable food containers. I'm wondering what else they would be if not EPS? Would they be non-recyclable plastic? I mean, I know I see some of that still flooding out there, certain cups and certain containers. I'm not ready to go all the way for the utensils, cups, lids, and straws. I mean, certainly, there are great options there, but I'm not, at this point, ready to go there with this first initial ordinance. I would, however, think it would be absurd for us to get rid of EPS from our restaurants and be able to have you buy a cooler at, next door at one of the grocery stores. So I would be in support of the retail sales side as well, and that would, I'm assuming that would then engage our three grocers in the community as well, so we need to reach out to them in addition to restaurants. I would be interested in discussing undue hardship. We can talk about a percentage, or maybe that's something that can come back to us with the initial draft. So I think what I'm trying to do is just give some initial direction for staff. And then again, just mentioning, seek stakeholder input early and often. And I would, I'd love to talk perhaps at that time, if we're engaging our grocery community, maybe asking them about the meat and the fish, because I, I'm thinking to myself, you know, I shop different places, we all do, and, you know, certainly, when I go to, for example, Costco, rarely do I shop outside the city of Morro Bay, once in a while. I do realize, though, at Costco, I, the things come wrapped in plastic, fully wrapped. There is no EPS base, which could be, so I think there are options, and it might be a great time to outreach and engage our grocers to find out a little bit more information from their end on that. So I, I agree, it just seems if we're, if we're really going to be serious, maybe we need to get a little bit more information on the grocery side. Buy in bulk was a great idea, a great option for our businesses, so we might want to investigate something like that on the staff side, a buy-in-bulk program. And lastly, I am a, along with the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce member, I'm a Slow Chamber of Commerce member, and I was able to watch how active that Chamber of Commerce was in getting the word out to their, their business members. They directly engaged them every step of the way, and the interesting thing that I was able to observe was, it did happen that there were, the suppliers did also get into the game, because obviously, when you're cutting out that supply, they're losing money on things that they deliver to businesses. So there was a bit of a push and pull between the supplier and the actual restaurateur, and there was something that came out publicly in the city of Slow's public process where a business owner actually sent one letter saying that they were opposing the ban, but somehow, the letter wasn't quite from the owner, and that owner of the business sent a letter that revoked the initial letter and then was indeed... and then was indeed in support of the ban. So I think things like that will start to happen in Morro Bay, because those pressures are always out there. So I think we just want to be aware of that. And then lastly, what I did notice was because of the active participation of the Chamber of Commerce in the city of SLO, they were able to find a way to celebrate the idea that the customer was demanding this change. So many of the businesses commented, you know, if this is what my customer wants, then, you know, I'm going to then, you know, provide that for them, with the comment that, you know, that will cost you a bit more for your drink and things like that. So I just noticed the process was very open and engaging right from the beginning with businesses. And I would want to see us do that for sure. I wouldn't want this to be a surprise, but want it to be a conversation we have with our business owners, realizing they're busy, they're trying to, you know, make their business run. They're likely not even watching this meeting tonight. But the word of, this will get around quickly. So I think at this point, this is, this is what I would offer. But I will, I'll have to say to Mr. Deschler, I was impressed about two years ago, you won't even remember. I was at a restaurant and you had come out and you actually had your own containers that you brought from home to take your leftovers in. And I have thought of that. That's, you know, really, you inspired me and I haven't yet done it, but it's something easy and that we could do, you know, in the interim perhaps to the ban. But you definitely walked the walk. So, thanks.
Thanks Christine. John?
Thank you. So tough subject, but easy. So Rob, let me take some pressure off of you. So I am a chemist, and unfortunately, this product was invented by an apothecary or a pharmacist in 1839. Now that was a long time ago, prior to, when I practiced a few years. And it has progressed rather dramatically. And I really believe there's a lack of understanding and knowledge out there about this entity as a chemical entity and what some of the issues are. And so just to, just to very briefly make you all chemists, polystyrene is chemically inert. That makes it particularly resistant to breakdown by a number of products and/or some usual things that one might use to break down a chemical agent. There are a number of different forms of polystyrene that have been developed over the years. Some you would recognize, a lot of the disposable razors that we use. Some of those plastic clear plates are actually polystyrene. So you have to be careful and really determine what you're looking at. In terms of degradation, it, as a chemical agent, it hangs around forever. It's very difficult to degrade. You could leave it out. It is not photosensitive, so it will not break down in the presence of light. And will only break down significantly in the presence of heat. And I'll talk about that in just a second, because I think that's an important piece of talking about why the Integrated Waste Management Authority has not taken it on as of yet. The various forms also include foams that are used rather significantly. And also the CD carriers that you have for most CDs, those are polystyrene. And so it's all over the place in forms that I think, not just those little beads that we hate when we get a package full of them that comes to our business that we have to clean up. It's not by itself, as I said, biodegradable for hundreds of years. And so it almost basically lasts forever if you just leave it sitting outside. So it's very resistant to the elements in general. It can leach into many different things. It's not recommended that you microwave it, because it can leach into food. And it's been known to be carcinogenic. Now, some of the studies are controversial on that, but I do consider it personally to be a carcinogen, which means that it's cancer-causing. And the leaching that occurs over time, you know, in 100 years, we'll find out, you know, how much exposure it really takes. Right now, the literature says it's not significant. You'd have to use a significant amount. But again, it's very early in terms of, I think, discovery and knowledge. But it is a known carcinogen. This is the issue with regard to getting rid of polystyrene. And here it is. It says if polystyrene is properly incinerated at high temperatures. And what does that mean? It's 1,000 degrees centigrade in order to fully degrade it with air injection required. And the chemicals that are generated when it is degraded properly in that way by incineration are water, carbon dioxide, and possibly small amounts of halogen compounds, which in themselves can be toxic, especially the carbon dioxide. So the incineration has been the issue. And it takes large volumes to, from a cost standpoint, justify the incineration unit that would be required to get to that level of heat and a significant volume to get the temperature up so that it would be able to be incinerated. And then you'd have to control the chemicals that are produced through incineration. It's also, as I said, a leaching agent. And the various forms leach into a number of different things. Your fingers, when you touch it, especially if you have oily fingers, you're more likely to absorb it through your skin and into your, to your system. And so there are many issues associated with it. And it's a, it's a compound also that is highly flammable. And let me just read to you the fire hazard statement. It says, "Like other organic compounds, polystyrene is flammable. It is classified according to DIN 4102," Steve would love that, "B3 product, meaning that it's highly flammable or easily ignited. As a consequence, although it is an efficient insulator at low temperatures, its use is prohibited in many exposed installations in building construction, material, because of the fact that it's not foam-retardant." Plastic materials have been accidentally ignited in microwave ovens and have caused huge fires and losses. For example, at the Dusseldorf International Airport, the Channel Tunnel, where polystyrene was inside a railcar that caught fire, that caused a massive fire and massive death that has been unheard of to date anywhere else. And so the highly flammable nature, I think, is unknown to many of us. In summary, and I'm sorry to take so much time, it's a bad dude. It's a bad chemical. And getting rid of it is very, very difficult and costly. I would agree with the comments that Christine made. I think we, number one, need to educate people about this chemical entity. We are a marine environment, and this stuff floats and appears like wonderful food to a lot of our mammals and fish that are out there and are often found in multiple studies inside, undigested, as you can imagine, forever in species that take in this when they do use it for food. And so I highly support the creation of this policy. And I would suggest, as Christine has mentioned, that if we can get education going, proper education going quickly, that we can move forward. I support the pursuing of an ordinance regulating the use of EPS, the inclusion of EPS food containers. I support including retail sale of EPS products, including the exception for undue hardship in lieu of fine program and seeking stakeholders' input through a written survey or whatever survey method that you may use. And so that's where I stand from one that is really concerned about a product that's nasty. Thanks.
Noah?
Yes, thank you. And I would agree with the comments before me. I did want to clarify, though, my thought regarding the integrated waste management is not about whether, why they have not pursued some form of a recycling program, because I'm fully aware of the challenges of recycling the material. But the idea that they should be leading on the ban, because it is such a clear and obvious thing that we need to do, and recognizing that the ban on the plastic bags, the single-use plastic bags, personally from my observations, has been effective. You see far less of those on our highways and in the waterways. And that's an example of a change that was starting to happen by choice, by many businesses and consumers. But it did need government to step in and provide the final blow to move on from something that's really causing a lot of damage. So my thought would be, let's try to form some type of communication to the IWMA, letting them know that it's really great that there's this citizens group that's moving forward and being proactive and is grassroots, but this is really the IWMA's job. And here we are as a city, going through a process that we should, we need to be involved. But to ask that each city, five cities in the whole county, go forward with this same sort of pursuit, when we actually are involved and members of the IWMA, for them to facilitate this very sort of action. So I think we should be fairly strong in some form of communication to them that we expect that they will step up and help and move this forward. A couple of other quick benefits I think are really important for us to recognize is, just earlier, we heard the concerns about trash building up in our new Harbor Walk area. And we know we've been wrestling with trash at the Rock and some of the other popular areas. And a big part of that is just volume. And from my work with special events recycling, when you have a lot of styrofoam available at an event, it's guaranteed that you're going to triple, quadruple your bulk. And therefore, your handling and the amount of maintenance and personnel that's involved and the pickups and so forth. So the example on a macro scale of what happens at our landfill is a good one. But then also on the smaller level and how much of a challenge we're having dealing with the number of people here and the amount of recycling and trash we have available. So I think there'll be some good benefits there as well. And when I think about government taking action like this, it's not something we should do lightly. But in this case, it's been cited, there are viable alternatives readily available everywhere you go now. And many of our local markets are already carrying those. And in some cases, as was pointed out, they are less expensive. So just recognizing our place here on the coast and as a marine sanctuary and with the public health effects that Mr. Heding laid out so well, I think this is indeed a no-brainer that was mentioned earlier in public comment. And as far as the different questions here, I think I liked how Christine laid them out. There's some that, the first two, I'm clearly in support of from the beginning, including the retail sale, I think, is important, and the lieu of fine, as well as the stakeholder input. Some of the other components, I think it's smart to wait until we have some more outreach and then the first draft to make decisions on those. And I would definitely encourage city staff to engage, as was suggested, with the Chamber and the Merchants Association, but specifically with the Chamber perhaps, on the bulk purchasing idea, because that seems like a great place for them to help facilitate the outreach with the business community and provide a good service.
Thanks Noah. Thanks for everybody's comments. First of all, in the staff report, I appreciate laying out the questions for council and direction and basically the work that went into that. Thankfully, we did have the city of San Luis Obispo help with, in large part, what we're looking at tonight. But thanks for bringing that. I think that's very helpful in the starting direction and where we need to go. I will echo my support as well. I'll just, I'll go down the list in which was laid out and then make some following comments. You know, I'll support everything on the list. I would like to, the one line as far as utensils, I get that as far as the recommendation of no, at least from some of the comments I've heard. And, you know, I think at that, San Luis Obispo, you know, at this time, didn't pursue that. I would, I feel, I feel the same way. Then all, include all non-recyclable, non-compostable, non-reusable food containers. More discussion in that, I think, was, I think that does deserve more fleshing out. With the rest of them, I'm in support of the exemption and the exception for undue hardship. We got input for 50% on there. I, you know, I think that's great to have that kind of input. It gives us some, something to go, I know we had some 15% versus 50%, but obviously we need to work on that. And so that's an area that I'm hopeful we'll be, we'll flesh out. Stakeholder input, I would echo in, as far as having that written survey, any outreach at all as number one, and pursue that as well. Enforcement, comments on that, complaint-driven. You know, I think that's something that we will roll out as well. Just as a thought, you know, every year we renew business license. We get a business license certificate. That may be an opportunity to slip that kind of language in there. Hey, do you realize or do you understand, are you, what kind, how are you participating, however that language? But maybe that could be part of a survey as far as education and enforcement. Time implementation and rollout, I don't think we've really discussed a timeline and the need of that. And I think we'll let the process, as we go through that, determine that. IWMA, really interesting discussion on that. I would consider if this council wants to, as part of this, consider, you know, a letter to IWMA, whether or not we need to re-agendize that or wait for this process to come back with us? Or if we should just work on it right now? I mean, as far as re-agendizing it and to talk about agenda. And I know Joe, I'll let you just a minute, I'll finish my comments. But I think that's, I think that's worthwhile. I think, you know, as members of that board and as leadership roles, you know, something, you know, things start in all different ways. But it also means that certainly we should be considering a letter of support and actually our comments on how our IWMA is participating in the county. So Joe, did you have some comments on that in particular?
I just wanted to say, I think pursuant to the Brown Act, you have enough leeway, based on this item, that you could decide tonight to send a letter to IWMA.
Okay. We'll come back to that in a minute, and then I'll just conclude on some of my, some of their comments. And obviously, we had, we had a lot of discussion on the hazards, the biodegradable component to this. And it's pretty, it's pretty large. You know, I'll just, I'll just speak shortly into that regard. Benzene is one of the components of polystyrene. Interestingly, benzene was a component in gasoline not but, you know, a decade ago, which was very short-lived because of the hazard, and it's not a good one. So it's not something, but it's interesting. We see all these things in our lives and then as we grow and learn more of them, it's like, ah, do we really need this? Businesses, I just want to talk about that as well, because, you know, I think, as I was reading some of the literature, New York City came to mind in what their ban was for polystyrene. And I can't imagine, when you think about the scale of New York City and then banning that and what the financial component that is, when you add all that up and just food service industry alone converting into a different type of product. Sensitive to that, however, you know, I think we had some comments on whether or not the Chamber might be involved in more of a global resource that way. But... But I would hope that when we consider business and what we need to be protecting and even the cost of this, I think there's other cities that have actually documented the overall financial burden it is to maintain this product. And so, it spills over to all of us in one way or another. We see it down at the Rock, and I think it was a great point, Noah, you made, that just the sheer volume itself, it spills over and it's not pretty. And that's something, and what do we do? Do we add more receptacles, larger receptacles? You know, it's just, at what point do we react to this? So, I'm in support of it, and I'm looking forward to the process going forward. The outreach, the surveys with our businesses, you know, I know there's businesses already in town that are doing recycled food containers. They don't use any polystyrene at all. So, there are businesses that are already leading in that way and feel very comfortable in their business model and paying the additional expense for that. So, those are my comments for that. And I think we need to wrap it back to a letter. There's some conversations. John, you're reaching for the button to make some comments. Yeah, thanks.
Just to make a comment as the representative to the IWMA. Prior to possibly writing a letter, it would be good to come from, I think, the context of having an ordinance in place and possibly, instead of a letter of possibly outlining what the steps should be for them, just a general letter of concern on our part and the fact that we are in the process of developing it. And we would like feedback on what their global plan is for addressing both the recycling, which is very limited, very difficult to recycle, but also the waste disintegration, which is really the issue I'm most concerned about. So, that would just be my suggestion.
Great approach. Thanks for those comments. Noah, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think that's a smart approach because I'm surprised that the IWMA would be pushing for five individual ordinances to be developed that will all likely be different and then coming back later with a county ordinance that affects the unincorporated areas. It just becomes very messy. So, I think your approach is a good one and mostly asking them to make recommendations so that we could work towards something that's more uniform and easy to implement for the businesses as well.
As far as drafting a letter, Mr. Penone, you were talking about that. If you feel so inclined as the IWMA member, representative from council, wanting to draft that letter, that would be perfectly appropriate from my standpoint. Anybody else on council want to?
I think you should leave the letter with if your hands are oily. Because I'm really concerned about, my hands really oily? Am I, no, but I think you've got a lot of basis for making it scientifically, and it is the role you're feeling for us here. So, thank you for doing it. Just scare them with that fingertip one. I was like, oh, my gosh.
Noah, John, yeah? Any comments on draft letter coming back to council? Are we just good for, you know, Joe, as far as just having our IWMA member just go ahead and draft it and we're good to go?
It's up to you.
Okay. Any other comments? We're basically with that? We're good? Okay, that sounds great. Okay, as far as, I'll back up and I'll look towards Rob as far as we provided input based on these questions, and I think that's been captured. Are we good there? Okay?
Yes.
Going towards recommendation for a motion. So, it's apparent that we are all in support of moving forward with, to pursue passing an ordinance to ban EPS. Do you have any comments or suggested or motions?
Well, I think really all we need is direction to pursue the ordinance. I'll work with the city manager and other city staff in developing the schedule for pursuing that ordinance. And then, we can bring that to you in an update, either city manager memo or a more formal update. So, I think all we need is direction to, you know, pursue the ordinance based on discussion, start a public outreach program, and I'm not sure that anything else is required.
If I may, I think we have a consensus based on the chart with the yeses and nos.
Yep.
I think we have a consensus on what to do.
Okay. So, no formal, we're good with the direction, no formal motion required, direction's pretty good? Okay, all right, thank you.
We're sure she can do a motion?
And with that, any motion for, go ahead and, the motion?
I would move that we send a letter to the IWMA outlining our concern and approach to dealing with the issue of polystyrene and the adverse chemical effects on individuals and the ecosystem in general, and asks for input on their global consideration of their, am I going too fast? Their plan for a countywide policy for both handling and dealing with this issue.
And authorize you to sign it, so it doesn't have to come back for everyone to review.
Indeed. And authorize me to sign.
Second.
Okay. Motion's clear to me. Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Smuckler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you.
May I ask one quick question?
Yes.
I guess I just might have heard something, Noah, said, are you comfortable not making a motion for the actual action? I just, you mentioned something I wanted to follow up.
Usually, pretty good to make a motion.
Pardon me, are you good to make a motion?
You feel fine with that one?
Yeah, you know, I feel comfortable with making a motion, too. I mean, it's basically making the motion that we want to pursue the ban ordinance. So, I think formality, if council wants to do that, I think it'd be very appropriate.
Well, I think it might help John in his letter.
I do, I think so. I do.
So, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Jamie, did you, go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do pursue an ordinance regulating the use of EPS and that we direct staff to begin implementation of a public education campaign and communicate with the IWMA about the potential future countywide regulations and return with a draft ordinance informed by the public education effort.
So, I'll second that.
So, a motion by Noah, a second by Christine, discussion? I just wanted to make sure, since we did go through a motion, that we do include council discussion and direction on the outlined questions that were proposed.
Yeah, as discussed.
Okay, as discussed. So, is that added to the motion? Are we, we're good there? Okay. And we're good with the second?
Yes.
Okay, we're good with the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Four, zero. And with that, we can conclude item D2 and move on to council declaration of future agenda items. And I did want to discuss a future agenda item based on the presentation that we had tonight from, with the CCA, the Community Choice Aggregation. It was great for Mr. Rumble to come down and give us that presentation. For us to go any further, that gave us basically council an outline on what it's about, but it's a pretty big issue, and it's bigger than a presentation. And so, I'd like to discuss a future agenda item on CCA and basically an approach on how or if this council wants to pursue more information on that as a city that we proposed tonight. So, I'm just, get some general discussion on that, if there's interest, and how do we want to, how do we want to go about that? Is there general interest?
I'm in support. And would that include discussion about some form of response to the City of San Luis Obispo's letter?
Absolutely, it could, and I think that's appropriate when it comes back to council to have those and, you know, those discussions and actions.
Okay, I'm in support.
I had breakfast with Mr. Rumble this morning, spent an extended amount of time with him, and I would highly support that as an agenda item and would have brought it up myself.
Yes, support of him.
So, basically, the agenda item would be to pursue or at least bring back for discussion the broader view of Community Choice Aggregation in the context that the, we, the presentation that we had tonight. And that would give us the options of what direction council might want to pursue and include what other cities, San Luis Obispo in particular, is doing at that time.
And leave for the city manager when it would come back, or did you want to give specific direction as to when you want to see it back?
Helping with that, the city council agenda, it might be easier for myself and the city manager to work out an appropriate time. You know, we could say, you know, in 30 days, but we, our agendas are flowing pretty well. I'd be kind of sensitive to working that part out.
Yes. I would agree with that approach, and I'd actually like to put a request in that Mr. Rumble mentioned tonight the potential to add a pro forma analysis of potential costs and scenarios for us to the feasibility report that was already submitted. I think that extra meat would really help us in our discussion. So, if possible, if they're able to develop that and provide that as part of our discussion.
Okay.
One of the thoughts, and this is the general thought that I had, is that you being overloaded with having to take on each of these issues as they come up. And so, as I see these opportunities arise, you as mayor, and wondered if, you know, it might be appropriate, and I don't want to use the word subcommittee, but if, from a workload standpoint, you wanted to appoint somebody, just open that up as a consideration. Not, and that's no reflection on what you're doing or how you're doing it, but just worried about the continuous amount of workload that you have as well and being sensitive to that. So.
I think, pardon me? Part of the discussion? And I think originally, this discussion came up as, when we passed the resolution to support the concept of a CCA. I was appointed as that liaison at that time. And it's been a long discussion, but that was part of the introductions of Mr. Rumble. And I think as he explained it tonight, it's a pretty big obligation for a city to take it on, and that's one of the reasons they developed the company that they have. So, anyway, we can come back with that discussion then. Anything else for future agenda items? Noah?
I just wanted, Ben, kind of one of the themes for tonight, I'm glad Mr. Leibick's still here. Do you, do you feel confident that we've got our arms around the waste management of mostly the Rock and the new Harbor Walk area, or is this something that might make sense to have as a discussion at the Public Works Advisory Board?
I would support that.
I think there's issues with waste management at the Rock and all over our visitor-serving area.
Yeah. You mind? Public Works Advisory Board?
Do I mind? Of course not.
I think that'd be a good thing to do.
I think we did, it was on the agenda for quite some time, and I think that was brought up as far as revisiting the Big Belly waste containers. That was supposed to come back and review on their performance. I mean, we invested in that. We were supposed to come back and review how they're working. So, maybe as part of that discussion, that should be part of it. So, as I understand that, we're going to, the ask is to send that conversation to Public Works Advisory Board as discussions on what we can do for waste management out on the Rock and our visitor-serving areas, which would be the Barkadero. I mean, it's an open-ended, I mean, you can, you can say the downtown area or business areas, people are saying, hey, we don't have enough on the downtown area. So, you know, I think maybe as an overall discussion at this point. Christine?
Thanks, I'm glad you mentioned it. I think that perhaps I would suggest to you that we had, we've been notified about Saturday garbage after the farmer's market on Main Street, being there on Sunday. And I think something I, to inform the conversation when it goes to Public Works Advisory Board was the memo that council received from city manager, I believe, after an analysis of where we stand with our trash. Do you recall that, maybe two weeks ago? I know you sat down with city manager and really talked about our staffing numbers and our increase in visitors.
Yes.
And how that's been putting pressure. So, that was a really informative email. So, I would hope that you would begin with that kind of analysis. It's already been done.
Yes.
By staff.
That this would lead to a recommendation, most likely, to the council.
Okay. So, we got unanimous support on that, and then it would come back to council? Anything else? We're all looking good? Okay, all right, good. And with that, we'll adjourn. Our next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall located at 201 Surf Street, right here in Morro Bay. And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.